Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Sandra Merman. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Les Miller. Representing District Four, Stacy White. Representing District Five, Mariella Smith. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Kimberly Overman. The county administrator is Mike Merrill. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning, and welcome to your Board of County Commissioners meeting. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation given by Chaplain, Commissioner Stacy White?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Remain standing.
Remain standing for the invocation, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the leaders that are here today to be recognized with a proclamation. And as always, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions. And as always, Lord, I ask for special blessings for members of our armed forces and first responders as they carry out their duties each and every day. I pray that you will keep them safe and bring them guidance and comfort. I ask for all of these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have one proclamation this morning, and that's mine. So I'm going to do it from the well. Good morning again. It's a pleasure for me to present this proclamation to some ladies that were celebrating their Founder's Day this month. The fortunate opportunity that the Divine Nine, and I think our members all know about the Divine Nine because I'm a member of it and I talk to them about it constantly. I think there's about four or five of us that have Founder's Day in the month of January. And this morning, we're going to recognize the ladies of Zeta Phi Beta and their Founder's Day. So will all of you please come forward? And I see that you brought your brothers of Phi Beta Sigma with you. So glad to have them here. Come on, come on up here. Good morning, I need you to have a... Just the ladies, my brothers, just the ladies. Y'all can stand, you can stand there. For those of you who don't know, the ladies of Zeta Phi Beta's, their brothers are the brothers of Phi Beta Sigma, and they're here this morning to work to help them celebrate. So I want to welcome you all here also. This morning, we get this proclamation to the ladies of Zeta Phi Beta, and it reads, "Whereas on January 16th, 1920, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority was founded by Arizona Cleaver Stedsmans, Pearl Ed Neal, Myrtle Tyler Faithfull, Viola Tyler Goings, and Fanny Petty Watts, five visionary Howard University coeds, who are known as the Five Pearls. And whereas a not-for-profit organization was created on the principles of scholarship, service, sisterhood, and feminine womanhood, named the foundation for generations of women to emulate the objectives and ideals of the sorority. Whereas Zeta Phi Beta and its dedicated membership have supported national and local programs, and Zeta chapters have given countless hours of voluntary service to educate the public, mentor young people, provide support for military and veteran programs, scholarships, and promote legislation for social and civic change. And whereas for 70 years, four local chapters of Zeta Phi Beta have committed themselves providing continual service to Hillsborough County. And whereas Hillsborough chapters Tau Pi Zeta, Epsilon Beta Zeta, New Epsilon Zeta, and Beta Sigma Zeta have made significant contributions to the community through numerous initiatives and programs such as adopt a school, elder care, we need that because I'm getting old, Stoics Nest, and Men's Health Forum, we need that also, because men don't know how to take care of themselves. You all do that. We're so hard-headed." To name a few. Whereas it celebrates its centennial anniversary, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated continues to retain the highest ideas of its mission and is poised for perpetual service in the next century. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, is hereby declared January 16th, 2020, as Zeta Phi Beta Day in Hillsborough County and commence Tau Pi Zeta, Epsilon Beta Zeta, New Epsilon Zeta, and Beta Sigma Zeta on their year's exemplary service to the community executed this 23rd day of January 2020, and is signed by the seven members of Board of County Commissioners. So I have one for each chapter. Tau Pi Beta, okay? Epsilon Beta Zeta? Who's that? Anyone? Okay. New Epsilon Zeta? And Beta Sigma Zeta? Okay. Now who's going to be the spokesperson? That'll be you.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, County Administrator, Mr. Merrill. My name is Willette Hollinger, President of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated Tau Pi Zeta Chapter. Zeta Phi Beta is a Greek organization of the Divine Nine founded on the campus of Howard University, on January 16th, 1920, founded by five coeds. It gives me great pleasure to stand before you today to accept this proclamation for Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated's 100th year of existence. Many Greek organizations have stood before you to celebrate their centennial anniversaries, and all are to be applauded, as we work tirelessly to further the mission of our founders, community leaders as yourselves, and public officials in making a positive impact, being agents of change, and making a difference in the lives of people right here in Hillsborough County and abroad. In Zeta, we are proud of many things. We're the first Greek organization to charter a chapter in Africa, the first to form auxiliary groups, and the first to be constitutionally bound to a fraternity. And I'd like to invite my brothers to come and stand with us as well, as well as our We have all said this phrase a few times, but we actually have tried it and know it to be true. It takes a village. Zeta's five visionaries, Arizona Cleaver Stedsmans, Pearl Anna Neal, Myrtle Tyler Faithfull, Viola Tyler Goings, and Fanny Petty Watts, knew we could not do this work alone. Today, we are still the only Greek organization that are constitutionally bound to a fraternity, our brothers, the men of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated. And in addition to our family is our auxiliary named the Amikai, which is Greek for our friends. We all work together as the Blue and White Family to help carry out the mission of our founding principles of scholarship and service. Over the past 10 years, the Blue and White Family has awarded over $400,000 in scholarships to Hillsborough County schools graduates to help further their education. We've adopted several schools here in Hillsborough County and provided workshops, mentorship, friendship, food, fun to parents, teachers, and students all alike. We volunteer monthly at nursing homes, incorporating fun back into the lives of others, feeding the homeless and providing care packages when and where necessary. We partner with the NAACP and sponsor voter registration drives. We host community forums. We partner with the supervisor of elections in adopted precincts throughout the county. We fundraise for local and global causes such as March of Dimes, American Cancer Society, Making Strides Breast Cancer, Men's Health Forum with Moffitt Cancer Center, Women's Veterans Rock, Relay for Life, and St. Jude, just to name a few. Zeta Phi Beta Sorority takes pride in its continued participation in transforming communities throughout through our volunteer services from all of our members and our auxiliaries. Our work is never done. None of what we do would even be possible if not for the dedicated members of this family you see before you here. And I would be remiss if I did not give credit to our great leaders on the front line sitting before you here in this room, the Board of County Commissioners and our county administrator, Mr. Merrill. Centennial only comes once in a lifetime, and we are so grateful for your time today in celebrating our 100-year celebration, making January 16th, 2020, Zeta Day in Hillsborough County. On behalf of my state director, Ms. Paula Kaye, and the other officers on our state level, and on behalf of the four Zeta Phi Beta chapters who have provided 70 years-plus service to Hillsborough County, Tau Pi Zeta, Beta Sigma Zeta, New Epsilon Zeta, Epsilon Beta Zeta, and our brethren Phi Beta Sigma and the Gamma Eta Sigma Chapter, and all of our auxiliary members, all known as the Blue and White Family, today, we thank you.
Dr. Fam, so going to have to get to know you.
Mr. Merrill, changes to the agenda.
Yes, Commissioners, we have only a couple of changes. We have one deferral, which is A-12. That's an agreement with University of Florida for the Lake and Stream Management Program. That's deferred to February 5th. We have one item that was moved from regular to consent. That's B-3. That was to schedule and advertise a public hearing for February 5th to consider enacting an ordinance authorizing a sterile needle and syringe exchange program. No items have been removed from consent for any reason. We have one public hearing at 10:00 a.m. That's to approve the adoption of an ordinance to amend the county's mobility fee program ordinance that will remove the RP2 distinction in the Rural Assessment District. At 10:15, time certain, F-3, which is Commissioner Merman's item. To receive a presentation by Sarah Coteur of the Fines and Fees Justice Center and to approve a resolution supporting the passage of House Bill 903 and its companion Senate Bill 1328, which seeks to modernize Florida's fees and fines structure. 10:30, time certain, F-2, Commissioner Kemp's item, an agreement with Susteney Foundation to provide operational support and program development, delivery for entrepreneurs and small businesses in the county to promote, implement sustainable practices in their businesses. And at 11:00 a.m., we have G-1, which is to receive a report on the review of county-owned properties for lost burial sites. And 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes.
Before we do that, hold on, before we do that. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I need item A-19 pulled just for the purposes of abstaining.
Okay.
If we could add that to the list.
Any objection to that? Okay. Now a motion. Motion by Commissioner Merman, seconded by Commissioner Overman, to approve the changes to the agenda except for pulling A-19. Am I correct? Okay. Seeing the further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We now move into public comment. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. However, as requested, at the same time when you address the Board, the comments are not directed personally against the Commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides a mutual respect between the Board members and the public. The Board has set aside 45-minute periods in the morning immediately following the changes to the agenda for public comment. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Persons wishing to speak before the Board during public comment portion of the meeting should complete the electronic request for public comment form located at the sign-up table inside the Boardroom. Citizens speaking on agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-agenda items. When addressing the Board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Three minutes allotted for each speaker. There's a timer in front of you there on the podium. When it gets to the yellow light, that means you have 30 seconds. When it gets to the red light, that means your time is up. I can tell you now, we have almost two hours of speakers signed up. We will not get to each and every one of you this morning. So if you're still here later on this afternoon and at the end of our agenda, if you're still here, we'll call you up at that particular point in time. So our first speaker is Mary Ann Conlon, followed by Jack William Bilham.
Good morning. My name is Mary Ann Conlon. The pet stores that sell puppies in Hillsborough County can easily continue business by selling pet supplies only. Like dozens of other stores in the county, pet stores that say they go out of business is just a fabrication. As a matter of fact, after the ban on puppies and kittens sales in Sarasota County, a store previously that sold puppies was converted into a pet supply store. I ask that you remove the grandfather clause and give your three small businesses months, not years, to comply. Three months is more than enough time to comply with the business model. For example, Los Angeles had 25 stores, and they were all given 180 days to comply. Wilton Manor, Florida was immediate for their stores. San Diego stores were given 30 days. Many others were given 90 to 180 days to comply. Also, the closing of 11 Greyhound tracks, a huge business, was only given 14 months to comply. Removing the grandfather clause is the right thing to do, not only for the abused animals, but also for the consumers who are defrauded by the sales of these animals. Consumers are repeatedly told that they do not buy from puppy mills. Documentation shows otherwise. Look what's happening around you. Sarasota and DeSoto County stopped the resale of puppies and kittens. You can do the same. Please remove the grandfather clause as soon as possible. For two and a half years, Hillsborough County stores had their chance to abide by simple regulations and have refused to do so. It is time to put a stop to enabling the terrible industry that traffics in puppy mill dogs. The sooner the better. Thank you.
Jack Bilham, followed by Cynthia Khan.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jack Bilham. As a review, two years ago, you heard all the arguments and agreed that selling puppies, abused animals, to a defrauded public was an undesirable business, and Hillsborough wanted no more of that in your county. As a compromise, the three existing stores were grandfathered in with restrictions. It was an academic decision, since Hillsborough has never had the experience of having to supervise these stores. Let's see how this is working. The responsibility to act as a mini USDA and to monitor the stores fell to the PRC, which already had a full workload. The monitoring of these stores required that the PRC getting USDA inspection and violation reports to suppliers to these stores. There are problems, just to name a few. First, the USDA has removed all animal abuse records from public access, and the Freedom of Information Act requests must be made. This requires months, and there's no guarantee that you will receive reports, as Scott Trabowski has discovered. Second, some stores do businesses under different names, depending on what they are trying to hide, making the monitoring time-consuming and more costly to the county. Third, when stores buy from puppy brokers, there is no way to identify the source supplier. In order to comb through all of the obfuscation techniques employed by these stores, the PRC has had to call in the county attorney's office, another county department, another expense. With the experience you have now had with these stores, Hillsborough County understands it cannot expect honest compliance from a fraudulent, inhumane business that deceives the consumer and profits from the abuse of animals. No city, state, or county can. In effecting a ban on the sale of puppies, the average time given to stores to change their business model has been 90 days. Plenty of time to sell out their stock and not reorder and position itself into a humane pet supply business. Because of these facts, I respectfully encourage you to completely ban the retail sale of puppies and kittens. Thank you, Commissioners.
Cynthia Khan, followed by Karen Ankerstarr.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cynthia Khan. Societies and civilizations evolve. I'll say we're slowly awakening. SeaWorld will no longer breed orcas. Ringling has put its elephants out to pasture, and thank God, Florida no longer has dog racing. Countries have listened to their citizens, and Denmark has purchased to rescue all of its circus elephants, and England has banned puppy stores completely. We have come to understand that having been given dominion over all animals, it comes with responsibility. Ask yourselves, have we in Hillsborough lived up to that responsibility, or are we betraying that responsibility? Puppy stores are puppy mill outlets, and there is no argument about that. USDA or not, the mills are concentration camps for dogs, and sometimes they call it dog farming. The mother and father dogs are incarcerated, locked up in a cage for life, in unspeakable conditions, conditions you wouldn't accept at home, and conditions you wouldn't accept in your own animal services. The mothers are bred over and over again until they are physically and psychologically broken. We are talking about dogs, the same animals who loyally lead our blind or search for our lost and missing. They're the same animals who will protect and at times give up their lives for our police. Dogs will provide comfort and compassion for our veterans with PTSD. So for two years, this county has turned itself inside out to accommodate the greed of two store owners so they can profit from the abuse of all these mill animals. Their behavior is especially egregious considering they were given a monopoly to sell if they could follow the rules given to them. And so here we are again, after two years. The county knows this is an industry that cannot and will not follow regulations given to them. I say we have betrayed our responsibility letting this continue. It is really way past time to wake up and ban the sale of puppies and kittens. Your citizens are awake, and let's hope that those whom they voted into office are also. Thank you very much for giving me this time to speak.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm here to encourage you to remove the grandfather clause from your retail pet sales ordinance. The photos I will show you are from a puppy mill owned by Judy Rainey that your star, All About Puppies, bought from after the 2017 ordinance was passed. You will see there are many violations. This is an underview of the cage where these dogs live. The wire gauge is even thinner than allowed. You can see the paws sticking through the floor. Circled at the bottom is Judy Rainey, the owner of this puppy mill. And this, number two, is what happens to their paws. Constant sores, cuts, and abscesses. This dog has scratched himself raw on his chest and other places due to an untreated skin condition. This is a typical enclosure of hers, full of feces and the dog in a filthy plastic bin. You can see him in the back. This is a typical enclosure, full of feces and the dog... Oops, sorry, wrong one. An outside pen filled with feces inside and out. Note the average temperature in this city in January is 24, and in July is 92. These are not the highs and lows, just averages. And this is where this dog spends its entire life. The chewed bin is likely from hunger and anxiety. I will hand you the proof of purchase from this Judy Rainey puppy mill to your store, All About Puppies. I will also leave you with some other photos from a puppy mill that Puppies Tampa purchased from after the 2017 ordinance. They have purchased from this puppy mill for years, including when their store was in Sarasota, who ultimately passed an ordinance to ban the retail sale of puppies and kittens because of stores like those in Hillsborough County. Your pet stores have had over two and a half years to simply abide by the very reasonable regulations you gave them. Still, they continue to buy from puppy mills that violate those regulations and USDA standards. You gave them a chance to continue their operations, yet they ignored you. I urge you to remove the grandfather clause with a reasonable effective date like most other jurisdictions have. Why let this continue for years? Three months is more than enough time to sell out what they call their inventory. When someone breaks the law, they are not given years to continue to do so. These violators should be treated no differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom DeSilva, followed by Dr. Betsy Corville.
Good morning, Tom DeSilva. What do you think when you see a semi-truck going down the road? Truck full of puppies? Probably not. But if you get close enough, you might hear barking and crying. This is how puppies get to Hillsborough County, usually from Missouri, Iowa, and Kansas. These very young puppies are transported in small wire cages. They travel hours and hours without stopping, as most trucks do. The trucks are not temperature-regulated, no heat, no air conditioning, suffocating the summer heat, freezing the winter cold, young puppies. After all, according to the pet stores, they are simply transporting merchandise. As you can imagine, some of those puppies don't make it. Many get seriously ill. The trucks carry a freezer for little ones that die. For them, it's just the cost of doing other business. We are talking man's best friend here. Puppies should not be treated as products, transported as cargo, but it's a sad fact. The term puppy mill refers to the factory farming of dogs. The dogs are treated worse than livestock. There is no concern for the dog's health. Is this the business we want to support by allowing Hillsborough County to continue supporting this practice? Other places have outlawed pet sales and outlawed pet sales and have had fewer euthanized dogs and a lot more adopted. Stop the hundreds, if not thousands, of puppies being trafficked into the county. More people turn to shelters and rescues to find the pets. For those who want a pedigree dog, there is rescue for every breed within driving distance. You have found that regulating those stores does not work. Pet stores are merely puppy mills outlets where the stores can buy a puppy for $100 and sell it for thousands. Considering the horrifying conditions of puppy mills, the way puppies are transported, and the parent dogs that kept in cages their entire lives, is this what we want to continue to allow? City after city, county after county, elected officials are saying no to this. I ask you to do the same. Please kindly put a stop to this dark industry within months, not years. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. Betsy Corville, followed by Renee Rivard.
Good morning. I'm a veterinarian for the last 30 years in Hillsborough County, a short one. Where do pet stores get their dogs? They say they're not from a puppy mill, but rather from a licensed USDA breeding facility or local breeders to ensure you that they had a healthy, happy start in life. But few people know that the Federal Animal Welfare Act requirements... But few people know that the Federal Animal Welfare Act requirements for a USDA license are dreadfully insufficient. It is legal to keep a dog in a cage that is only six inches longer than their body. They can stand on a floor made of merely chicken wire and be stacked one on top of another for the entire life of the dog. So what the majority of the pet-owning public would consider cruel and inhumane is perfectly legal and licensed. A lifetime in overcrowded and unsanitary conditions. The ASPCA estimates that there are over ten thousand puppy mills in the U.S. The USDA-licensed breeder's goal is to maximize profits by producing as many offspring as quickly as possible. They breed the females at every heat until she is no longer capable and then is put down. There is no selective breeding to eliminate hereditary and congenital diseases as done by reputable breeders. Instead, these animals are prone to physical illnesses such as respiratory, skin, musculoskeletal, cardiac, and eye problems, as well as behavioral issues, aggression, fear, and separation anxiety. The pet stores typically have a money-back guarantee, but know that they are feeding on the attachment and guilt that results in the reluctance to return a sick animal to the store and trade it in for a new one. These are living, loving beings, not a broken toy. A responsible local breeder would never send their puppies or kittens to a pet store. Rather, they want to meet and screen anyone who wants to adopt one of their animals. Roughly 6.5 million animals go into shelters every year in the U.S. alone. Three million cats and dogs are euthanized, and approximately eighty percent were healthy, adoptable pets, with up to twenty-five percent recognized as purebred. Several pet stores stopped selling puppies and kittens years ago. Now it is the time for the rest of them to do the honorable thing also. As a USDA veterinarian who has seen the horror of the suppliers, I strongly recommend that Hillsborough County moves forward with humane and moral decision for man's best friend and prohibit all retail sales. Thank you for your time. Betsy Coville.
Renee Rivard, followed by Anne Cancio.
Renee Rivard, thank you for all that you and your staff are doing to protect animals here in Hillsborough County. In 2017, you promised to regulate the grandfather pet stores by making sure consumers were provided information about the breeders that supply the pet stores. Animal advocates warned that it would be difficult to obtain information about the breeders because of recent USDA privacy laws. Now you know it is true. It has been three years since the ordinance was passed, and Hillsborough County has only recently obtained information about one supplier that supplies to one of the pet stores. Here is a summary of what that one USDA report revealed. There were almost 500 dogs at that facility, up to eight years of age, 355 adults, 138 puppies, no bedding in 94 outside shelters where temperatures reached below 35 degrees at night, whelping area with, quote, "a very large number of cockroaches," and chronic ammonia buildup in another whelping area, dogs on raised wire floors with puppies' legs falling through the holes, Siberian Husky with ten piles of feces turned hard and white in enclosure, German Shepherd with cake feces on her upper back and cake feces on the wire floor. The facility owner stated that none of the dogs ever had their teeth cleaned. A pregnant Great Dane so thin her pelvic bones were visible, the breeder never contacted the vet. Dogs with teeth, ear, and eye problems that were not getting medical attention. When the USDA went back three months later, the dogs with eye issues still weren't being adequately addressed. This was the USDA report. Would consumers have been purchasing puppies from these pet stores, from this pet store, if they were aware of this information? Probably not. It has been three years, and Hillsborough County's ordinance has still not prevented the sale of puppies from inhumane suppliers. Please support a change in the ordinance that would make the grandfathered pet stores change their business models. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anne Cancio, followed by Elaine Galbraith.
My name is Anne Marie Cancio. I'm a resident of Hillsborough County. I would like to ask, join in solidarity with many that have gone before me, to ask for a complete ban on retail sales of cats and dogs obtained from any kind of breeder. My contention today is that the source of these dogs to Puppies Tampa and All About Puppies are USDA Class A licensed breeders. And I am here to tell you, from all that I've read and all that I know, that USDA Class A licensed breeders are little better than puppy mills. I don't want you to take my word for it. I'm going to quote from a white paper that I obtained from the Humane Society of the United States. It's on their website, excellent resource. I read, "The public purchases puppies from licensed breeders under the false assumption that a USDA license is a mark of quality. Sales talk repeated by pet store staff or on sellers' websites often refers to licensed breeders as USDA-approved breeders, implying that licensed breeders are held to a higher standard. But USDA-licensed breeders can legally keep hundreds of dogs in conditions that are harmful to both their physical and psychological welfare while remaining in full compliance with the Animal Welfare Act." Briefly, I'm going to speak to four posters that I brought. Picture is worth a thousand words, and I reiterate what an individual, the veterinarian, said before me. These pictures, this first picture, is a breeding female in an enclosure that meets the minimum care standards, excuse me, of USDA licensing. It has to be measured six inches above and around the body of the dog. This dog can be kept in this condition for the entirety of her life and bred repeatedly as long as she's fertile. Second picture I have is a paw of a dog that's been kept on a wire cage floor. This is so typical of inspection reports. Paws that are injured, have cysts on them, are bleeding. These animals must live on this wire grid for their life, and this is a minimal care standard for a USDA Class A license from APHIS. Quickly, how am I doing? These are stacked cages. You know, once again, USDA-licensed breeder here. This is, you know, really just deplorable. I think you can see. The last picture that I had is one of an outside cage. These animals, the minimal care standards are, the temperature can go below 45 degrees for a maximum of four hours and above 85 degrees.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, thank you. Thank you so much.
Elaine Galbraith, followed by Diane Coon.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Elaine Galbraith. I'm first quoting from the following from the ASPCA. "A new survey reveals that one in four people know someone who has purchased a sick puppy from a pet store. There are an estimated 10,000 puppy mills in our country. Puppies sold in pet stores come from commercial breeding operations, also known as puppy mills, that believe in profit over welfare. The following are my words. Petsmart, Pet Supplies Plus, and Petco all have pet adoptions. I ask the Commissioners to do what is right for the animals that are being horrifically terrorized in puppy mills for greed and ones that are being killed at Hillsborough County Pet Resource Center. Just imagine how many dogs and cats would be saved from being exploited and killed if all pet retail stores in our county had adoptions and not sell animals. Breed-specific rescues have animals that need homes. Let's give them a chance to adopt out these animals that originally came from puppy mills and bought at pet stores and, due to no fault of their own, were abandoned by the same people that bought them. These animals need homes, not death. Dogs and cats give us unconditional love, so why do some humans cause them so much pain and suffering and then kill them? What does that say about who they are as humans? Thank you for your time, Commissioners."
Thank you, ma'am. Diane Coon, followed by Susan House.
My name is Diane Coon. Hillsborough County's ordinance still has not prevented the sale of puppies from inhumane suppliers. The USDA report from 2019 on the Judy Hullett breeder and owner of dogs in her facility showed many inhumane practices of treatment of her dogs. Having only gotten one report in these last two years, these reports show these dogs are not getting proper medical care such as simple teeth cleaning and bathing. I'm strongly in favor of banning the sale of puppies and kittens in Hillsborough County and removing the grandfather clause. I also feel the commercial breeding of dogs is unethical, given the large number of animals that are euthanized in our county due to the lack of good homes. To address the worst and most dangerous practice in commercial breeding industry, I would urge the Commission to ban puppy mills in Hillsborough County to ensure that the massive rescue of hundreds of dogs that occurred at Tricia's puppy mill last year will not happen in our county again. The cruelties uncovered in this raid demonstrates that all too common issues with puppy mill breeding and the sale of companion animals, prohibiting puppy mills would greatly reduce the exposure that the county will have to deal with, hundreds of dogs as it had to as a result of Tricia's unscrupulous breeding activities. Remembering the song, the original 1950 song, "How Much Is That Doggie in the Window?" by Patty Page, today the answer is too much. And I don't mean just the price tag on the puppies in the puppy store, but the real cost is the suffering of the mother dogs back at the puppy mill. Patty Page changed the lyrics, "Do you see that doggie in the pet shelter?" in 2008. Is it a time for Hillsborough County to change its tune also? Thank you.
Thank you. Susan House, followed by John Cogley.
Good morning, Suzanne House, Hillsborough County. On February 3, 2017, USDA inspection reports of puppy mills became no longer available. No pet store or person can access the violations that occur at the puppy mills that supply pet stores. One can request a Freedom of Information Act report, but that takes months, and even then not are all available, and some are redacted to the point of being useless. So how can stores that sell puppies know the conditions of the puppy mills they purchase from? They can't. In essence, they buy blindly with no consideration for the violations and abuse that takes place in these dog factory farms. Yet even when the inspection reports were available, Hillsborough County stores bought from some of the most horrific puppy mills. Then anyone could get USDA reports online, you, me, or a store owner. But when they needed a certain dog, say a golden retriever or huskies, they just blindly ordered online. Who cares where they came from, if it was a terrible place or not? They needed to supply their inventory. And that continues, inspection reports or not. Stores buy from whoever has what they need. It is impossible for anyone to enforce regulations when the information is not obtainable and when transparency of purchases are impossible. That is why since 2007, lawmakers started to simply ban the retail sale of puppies and kittens in their cities and counties. It is the only thing that works. Sure, it was easier to grandfather that existing stores in, but all over the county, or the country, pardon me, grandfathering is not the case because it doesn't work. And sadly, Hillsborough County has found that to be true. I ask you to remove the grandfather clause, and importantly, please don't let your stores who are noncompliant with the law continue much longer. It takes only months, if not weeks, to go sell puppies they have. The norm all around the country is 90 to 180 days, and that is for stores that weren't even given the chance that Hillsborough County stores have had. Your stores need to choose to do the wrong, your stores chose to do the wrong thing. Please let's do the right thing and stop the importation of these abused animals as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. John Cogley, followed by Anne Cogley.
Puppy mills are inhumane commercial dog breeding facilities that sell puppies to pet stores through brokers, as you've heard, who buy the puppies and then transport them across the country. Puppy mills are the main source of over 99% of the puppies found in pet stores across the country. Puppy mills disregard the dog's health, both physical and emotional, in order to maximize profits. Responsible breeders do not sell puppies to pet stores. They have an extensive process to evaluate prospective homes prior to selling. In fact, most breeder code of ethics state that breeders should not sell to pet stores. They do not mass-produce puppies in cages. There are over, as you've heard, 10,000 puppy mills in the United States. The USDA has 110 inspectors to inspect those for over 8,000 total sites. Being USDA or government-inspected does not mean that a business is not a puppy mill, any more than having a driver's license guarantees that the holder of that license is a good driver. There are two primary reasons why the Animal Welfare Act and the USDA are not sufficient to protect dogs in commercial breeding facilities. The AWA standards are too minimal to ensure humane treatment, and the USDA does not effectively enforce the AWA. The picture you see on the slide is one USDA regulation. That is the size of a cage that a puppy, or a dog in a puppy mill, can fit into. Purebred registration papers also, from one of many kennel clubs or other dog registries, are only a record of the puppy's parents. Puppy mills routinely sell puppies with papers from prestigious sounding kennel clubs and organization. Organizations which gain millions of dollars in income from the sales of these papers to puppy mills. That is one reason why these organizations oppose legislation to end puppy mills. Finally, I encourage the B.O.C.C. to adopt legislation that puts an end to puppy mills in Hillsborough County and which enacts a total retail sales ban on the sales of puppies and kittens within the county, just like 67 other jurisdictions in Florida, over 300 jurisdictions across the country, as well as two states, California and Maryland, which have enacted statewide retail bans. Finally, puppy mill parents would like the choice of a humane life. Thank you for your time and attention. Your name is John Cogley? I'm sorry? John Cogley, Hillsborough County.
Anne Cogley, followed by Luke Loret.
Hello, my name is Anne Cogley, registered voter here in Hillsborough County. I am also a proud supporter of Harley's Dream, which is a nationally recognized nonprofit organization, harleystream.org, supporting their mission of creating awareness and educating the public about the cruel and inhumane commercial dog breeding industry, also known as puppy mills. I'm here today to urge you to consider legislation that will outlaw puppy mills in Hillsborough County and establish a full retail sales ban without grandfathering in existing pet stores. Please understand, I do not want pet stores to go out of business. I only want them to stop selling puppies and kittens and to offer rescue and shelter for dogs. I only want them to stop selling puppies and kittens and to offer rescue and shelter animals instead. Establishing a pet store ban in Hillsborough County would not only tremendously help homeless pets in our communities to get adopted, but it would also impact the supply and demand which allows the cruel puppy mill industry to exist. The 10,000-plus puppy mills in America are the leading cause of the pet overpopulation and euthanization crisis that we have today. Annually across the USA, over $1 billion are spent housing and euthanizing shelter dogs. It is time for Hillsborough County and the state of Florida to join the other 300-plus city, county, and state jurisdictions nationwide who have already implemented ordinances banning pet stores from selling puppies and kittens. By the way, I do have copies for each of you of the list of the 67 humane municipalities right here in Florida. Let's put an end to the cycle of suffering created by the horrific pet shop puppy mill industry and become a more humane county, saving animal lives, providing consumer protection, and saving taxpayers a lot of money. Think about this, if puppy mills did not exist, there would be 75% fewer dogs in shelters and rescues. Nearly 100% of puppies sold in pet stores and online come from puppy mills. Most puppy mill parents spend their entire lives in misery imprisoned in a puppy mill, and that's how Harley spent the first 10 years of his life. Today, hundreds of thousands of breeding dogs are suffering in cages all across the country right now, most of them crowded in wire cages stacked on top of each other, many outside in the elements year-round or in total darkness indoors, never seeing the sunshine or feeling grass on their feet. USDA licensed puppy mills are legal, but their standards are inhumane. Puppy mills are legal because the USDA classifies dogs as livestock. Reputable breeder slide, please. Reputable breeders do not sell to pet stores. It is against their breeder code of ethics. Responsible breeders do not mass produce puppies in cages, sell to a puppy broker. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Luke, Luke Larot followed by Mike Lampria.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I'm here representing the other side of this issue. My clients are Puppies Tampa and All About Puppies, and I hope you had an opportunity to review the materials that we submitted to you yesterday in anticipation of today's report from the county attorney's office. I want to indicate to you that the ordinance that was adopted a little over two years ago has been working wonderfully, and the accusations that my clients have done anything unlawful is simply not accurate. They have passed every inspection. They're dog owners, they're dog lovers, and they go out of their way to make sure that everything that they do embraces the humane treatment of all of the animals that they work with. The issues that came about that inspired this new look, if you will, at this legislation were generated by a business that was not governed by this ordinance, that operated in the shade, and I would say under the guise of a grooming facility that had been a known problem in this county for 20 years. Nothing was done about it, and it got worse and worse. Had the same ordinance that was adopted two years ago been implemented earlier, maybe that problem wouldn't existed. But it shouldn't be fair to allow the misdeeds of one business operator to be projected onto my clients. What I have provided you is a clear look at all of the different issues that have been discussed, and from listening to the prior speakers, a lot of what I think is, is problematic is that they don't like the way that the USDA has adopted or enforced their regulations. That's where they should go with those complaints. They should not try to put my clients out of business because the federal government hasn't been responsive to the desires or the needs that they have espoused. And one of the things that I didn't hear anybody mention today is that in my materials, we have page after page of the breeders that my clients use. These are not the inhumane conditions that have been picked out to try to convince you that this whole operation is detrimental to animals. Please take a look at these materials. You'll see that the vast majority of breeders actually do care about their animals. The businesses that are depicted are pristine. Unlike every other state, the state of Ohio has adopted regulations that have worked well, and the businesses thrive, the animals are healthy and happy. One thing I wanted to stress today is that included in your materials are two projected state statutes. Both the House and the Senate in the state of Florida have very elaborate bills that are going to be presented in this session that address all of the concerns that have been expressed to you. I would suggest that that would be the best solution because then it would be a statewide regulation that would be consistent and not different for different counties. It's in your materials. It addresses all of the concerns of breeders, and it addresses all of the concerns of retail pet stores that quite honestly, no matter how well-treated the animals are that, that they put out for sale.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Please review these materials, and thank you for the privilege.
Mike Lampria followed by Brian Braley.
Luke Larot, L-I-R-O-T.
Mike Lampria, Puppies Tampa. Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. My, my speech again has been blown completely out, so let's address something else. So on the slides, those are our actual kennels that we buy from, 100%. Those are our large breed dogs, and this is in the state of Ohio that took, basically that got sick of having 75 different ways to sell a puppy. They preempted the local counties because it got out of control. They put in regulations for the breeders and for the pet stores. After that happened, the quality of the kennels went through the roof. Now they're world-class. That's who we buy from. That's who our store buys from. So those are our actual puppies, not pictures from 2013. Next slide. It's hard to see because it's fuzzy, but what you're looking at in these kennels, and this is standard for our entire system, you have, and these are USDA kennels, not wire fences, not chain link fences, but what you have are, are custom-made steel enclosures. You have custom porcelain tile that they're standing on. You have a system that's standard that has natural light as well as artificial light. The big giant thing at the top that looks like an enormous oversized light, that's a standard system that we use, and that is a natural sunlight magnifier, so it puts in more natural light into the kennel system so that you're living on more natural light and not artificial light. Standard in our kennel system are heated tile floors. How many of you guys have that in your master bedrooms? So when you actually touch this floor to your hand, it is warm to the touch. It feels very nice, and that's coming off of a solar power system. So our kennels are standard on solar power. Next slide. This, this is very different than what you guys were told, isn't it? Again, you can see it, these are the interior of another kennel. It, it's the same setup over and over again. Natural sunlight systems, large enclosures for puppies and for, for, for the adults, custom tile flooring systems. Everyone lives inside. There's nobody outside in a cage freezing, is there? Next slide. Again, we have structures for everybody, not standing outside in cages. Nice building. Next slide. Forty-five seconds left, so let's go. Floors that are so clean they gloss. Next slide. We're not even standing on concrete anymore. Those days are over. We're now using very high-grade quality patio decking, so when you leave your puppy and mama room, you go outside to the outside run, and that's standard to have a channel that leads you out to the turnout yard, which is standard and mandatory in our system, which means everybody has an enormous yard to play in. Next. Again, this is a standard system. What you're looking at is the outside run of one of our kennels. It has a latch system that leads to the channel, and that channel is what leads to the yard for everyone to go to. It's mandatory. Next up. A duplicate picture. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Brian Braley.
Hey, Brian Braley.
Brian Braley.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. I'm Brian Braley, and I'm with the United Church of Christ, and I'm here this morning speaking on behalf of HOPE. We want to thank you again for budgeting the $10 million for the Affordable Housing Fund. That is an important step, and we do appreciate that. While HOPE has requested the $10 million on behalf of those with incomes of 50% of average median income and below, a distribution of some of these funds to higher AMI groupings has been recognized as a practical expectation, and it has been open to this. However, we feel it is reasonable that $5 million of this fund be dedicated so as to benefit those at 50% AMI and below. And this is not simply because this is the category that HOPE has consistently represented to you, but because of why it has. The numbers that have been presented to the board over these last several years have demonstrated that the category of greatest need is among those at the 50% AMI and below. And this is true in terms of numbers represented in the county and also in terms of the percent of their disposable income that has to go to housing. Included at the 50% AMI and below are the very low-income workers such as teachers' aides, janitors, nurses' aides, store clerks, and restaurant workers. HOPE has supported the distribution of some of these funds to categories above 50% AMI, but does not believe based upon need that it should be more than half as is being presently proposed. The truth is that the developments that tie in with major sources of assistance such as the low-income housing tax credits are geared to higher AMI categories. They dedicate only a small portion of the units to those at 50% AMI and below and less for those as you move down from 50% AMI. HOPE has sought to raise the absolute, in absolute terms, the amount of dollars that reach this very low-income group. This shift will not occur under the existing formulas that have failed and will continue to fail this group of workers in our community. For these reasons, we urge that the formula for distribution of these funds include $5 million for those at 50% and below and $5 million for those over 50% AMI. HOPE is not asking, by the way, that all projects or any project include 50% of the units at AMI, 50% and below, but the 50% of the money be dedicated to that effort. And we ask that it simply be utilized in whatever strategy the department comes up with that will maximize those units. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our last speaker for the morning is Steve Samaha.
Good morning, Steve Samaha. I'm here on item B2. Thank you for all of your time and interest in learning about the requirement to dedicate Palm River Road east-west. As you know, it's an important road located in the county's regional commercial land use category, the most intense land use category in the county. And it connects Falkenburg Road with the Palm River Road north-south portion that runs parallel to the interstate. I, I think most of you know I've sincerely tried to work out an agreement with the owner of the road to obtain access from my property to that roadway. Unfortunately, I haven't been successful. After the meeting last week, I had our attorney reach out again to the owner of the road's attorney requesting a meeting so that we could hopefully have some productive discussions. Unfortunately, we were rebuffed. No interest on their part to have a meeting with us. I've also attempted to work with county staff to resolve the issue, and again, that has not been productive, so it's, you know, fallen onto the shoulders of the, of the Commission to try to sort this out. I know you've received a lot of conflicting, maybe confusing, information about the status of this roadway. I just wanted to let you know that I've reviewed every page of the optics records regarding the zoning of the estuary project, the original zoning in O2 and, and all six amendments, as well as any relevant county code provisions and case law. And then to double-check myself, I had David Mechanic, my attorney, review all of that to make sure I wasn't missing something. And there's one fact that's indisputable. In 2002, the original zoning for this property required this road to be dedicated to the public, period. It was the only access for the estuary project at that time. It came from where Palm River Road dead-ended near the interstate, near the two hotels. I think most of you are familiar with how that road used to terminate. It was then coming down into the site, running along our common boundary of my property with the estuary out to Palm River Road, and it was the only access road for the estuary project. So the zoning was modified six times. None of those applications requested any change in the status to dedicate that road to the county. Never requested. And of course, there was no notice ever given to any surrounding owners that the requirement to dedicate the road was up for discussion or to be changed. So there's no doubt that the requirement to dedicate the road legally exists today. It cannot magically disappear when there's no request to change it to private and no notice given to change it to private.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That's the last speaker for the morning. The remainder of the speakers on the list will be called at the end of the meeting sometime today. That's a 45-minute period is up. We now move the consent agenda item that was removed for separate vote. That was A?
A-19.
A-19. Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Obermann. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And to avoid any potential conflict of interest, I'm going to abstain on this item. I'll just remind the board and the public that I'm just a, simply a part-time staff pharmacist with Suncoast, not in a decision-making capacity over there, but nevertheless, I always abstain on those items just to avoid any potential conflict.
Thank you, Mr. White. There's a motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Obermann to approve A-19. Send it further discussion. It's not to prove the consent agenda, just that one item. A-19, okay? Please record your vote.
Motion carried, 6 to 0. Commissioner White abstained.
Okay. We're now on the consent agenda.
Approve him.
Have a motion. Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner White to approve the consent agenda. Send it further discussion. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, 7 to 0.
Mr. Merrill.
Yes, Commissioners, your first time certain is the public hearing D1.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cameron Clark, Assistant County Attorney. This is an advertised public hearing. The, a bit of background, this is being amendment to your mobility fee ordinance that would incorporate a policy consideration that was previously discussed with the board in a couple of workshops by the consultant, Tindale Oliver. The effect of this is, at present, there are two assessment districts under the mobility fee ordinance, a urban and rural assessment district. They're based on level of service. The consultant can go into that as the board desires. The effect of this is going to be that at present, projects that develop under the Planned Village Standard under the, in RP2 category in the rural assessment district is assessed at the urban assessment rate, which is a lower rate than other projects that develop in the rural assessment district. This, this option was presented to the board, and it was being considered with the full study update that's presently under consideration, but the board directed that this item be brought back separately, and that's why this hearing is here today. It's been properly advertised. I can take any questions. You have also the consultant, Negan Kemp, is here for Tindale Oliver in case you have any questions about the study. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Merrill. Before we start the public hearing, I think you want to say something?
Yes, Commissioners. I'm going to recommend that you open, well, we did open the public hearing, take public comment and continue it. So you've all received an email this morning alleging that certain pages were removed from the mobility fee study by the consultant and, which are pertinent to the subject of the public hearing. I didn't, wasn't aware of that until this morning. I just asked Adam to try and get some information. Obviously, I haven't had enough time to process it, but, but it does appear that, that there were some pages removed that we weren't aware of, and I think before you can take action, we need to be sure that you've got all of the proper backup and documentation for this. So again, I would just recommend you take public comment. We continue the public hearing until the next meeting. We can sort out this issue and then bring it back.
The consultant moved, removed four pages on their own will and accord?
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out.
I can speak to that, Commissioner. So there's two parts to this ordinance. There is the ordinance language itself, which creates legal justifications, processes, and things of that nature, and then there's the study. The study contains the data that creates the assessment rates. So in the backup, what you have is ordinance language where you can see redline version of what's being, what you, what the action you are taking is amending within the ordinance, and there is an amended version of the study that the consultant generated. Now, if you'd like to see, I have redline version of the couple of paragraphs that have been removed from the study, but I purposely had a clean version of the study because the board is not actually amending the study itself. It's merely adopting an amended study that's provided by the consultant. It's merely adopting an amended study that's provided by the consultant. So the consultant generates the data that creates the fee, and so what you have is a clean copy of the updated study. Like I said, if you'd like, I can provide copies of the red-line version. It recently just strikes a few paragraphs from the study, and it makes a change to a map that's in the study that has a cross-hatch section in the RP2. Instead, it just has the urban rural assessment districts.
Mr. Merrill.
Well, I appreciate the explanation. I appreciate, but I think that for purposes of transparency and purposes of me being sure that we've got all of the materials that the board needs to see, I just learned of this this morning, and we're trying to process this on the fly. That's not fair to those who are here for public comment, and I just think that in the abundance of caution, we need to sort out whether the documentation is accurate and transparent or not. Again, we weren't aware of it. If I had been, I obviously would have done something about it, but it's my recommendation, but you can do what you want. If you want to go ahead and move forward, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. We're going to, this public hearing is already open. We have three people that will speak on it. You can speak when I call your name, and at that point, I would recommend that we continue this item until all this is rectified. We need to have transparency and not clouds over a situation that is so vitally important to this county. So at that point, I'm going to ask when the public, the public hearing is closed, that we make a motion to continue this after, make the continuance of it, and then have staff try to find out what happened, and then we bring it back another day. The first speaker is Kent Bailey.
Kent Bailey, Thonosassa, Florida, Chair of the Tampa Bay Sierra Club, speaking on behalf of 18,000 members and supporters. Good morning, Commissioners. With regard to item D1 on the agenda, I want to point out that this amendment to the county mobility fees will in no way whatsoever affect the cost of development. Should it be adopted, the cost of development will not change, not by one cent. What will change is who pays the cost of development. The cost of roads, schools, first responders, and civil infrastructure is the same, whether it's paid by taxpayers or whether it's paid by those who profit from the conversion of pasture land into turf grass cul-de-sac subdivisions. In every conversation about development, sooner or later, the notion of takings comes up. And it strikes me that it's not about the taking of the quality of life from rural neighbors who find their lifestyle devastated by the impact of neighbor, of intense development next door to them. It's not about the taking of time, especially family time, from workers, people just trying to earn a living, who used to have a commute that took 20 minutes, and now they find it takes 40 minutes, maybe it takes an hour. And it's not about the taking of tax dollars to make up for the shortfall between what development costs and what developers pay. We all believe in free enterprise. I'm a capitalist, just like the rest of you, and I ask you, how can the invisible hand of the marketplace create the necessary balance between supply and demand when developers are avoiding this necessary cost of doing business? Why is the government picking winners and losers by allowing developers to escape financial responsibility for the impacts of their for-profit enterprises? Now, let's be honest. When it comes to Hillsborough County, developers have long been the winners, and the losers have been the tax-paying citizens of Hillsborough County. Please, I urge you to adopt agenda item D1 and also related item F1. Thank you.
Jennifer Mottzinger.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jennifer Mottzinger, representing the Tampa Bay Builders Association. I've been with the Builders Association for 15 years. I'm certainly no stranger to fee studies and impact fee ordinances, but there is one anomaly to this, and I shared that with you in my comments this morning via email. I have not had a chance to review the updated study. That has never been the case. Typically, the public has been given an opportunity to interact with the information in the study and give public comment. That has not been afforded to us, so regardless of what you feel about the substance of the ordinance, I feel like this is a very, very dangerous situation that we've all gotten ourselves into with a surprise ordinance change. And I know, representing my members, I'm going to have a hard time explaining to them how I didn't have a chance to review the study. I had no opportunity to question the justification or how the calculations were made, or any of the usual things that I tend to do in three counties that I work, Pinellas, Pasco, and Hillsborough. I would also encourage you to continue the item, and I understand that there is an updated study that the consultant's working on. It is due to you before the end of next month, so all of your concerns can be shared in that venue, and the public would have an opportunity to weigh in and better understand the information that's given to them. Again, it has nothing to do with the substance of the ordinance. As a matter of fact, I've never opposed a fee increase, ever, in the 15 years I've been doing this. So it's not about that. It's simply about the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake Kramer.
Commissioners, good morning. Jake Kramer with Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street, number 2100. Mr. Chairman, with your approval, I'd like to pass out some materials to the board.
Give it to the clerk, and you can pass it out. Stop the clock. Stop the clock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for that. What I'm passing out is the 2016 original mobility fee study that your mobility fee is based on, excerpts along with copies of the study that was attached to the backup. I just discovered that this was attached to the backup last night. Burned the midnight oil and compared these. The only difference that I can see in these two studies is that all mention of RP2 has been taken out of the study. Commissioners, Florida law requires us, when we adopt impact fees and mobility fees, to justify it based on the most recent data and analysis available. We can't take a 2016 study and just take out information and justify an increase in mobility fees. Furthermore, what I would suggest to you is this is not just a mobility fee increase. This is a fundamental change to your assessment methodology. What the consultant did was the consultant looked at urban forms and rural forms in the county and said that those have different impacts. Those forms of development consume different amounts of your infrastructure. They didn't place RP2 within the rural study assessment zone. What they did was they said RP2 is so unique that it's in neither zone. In RP2, it depends on what your form of development is. That's how we determine what the fair amount of the mobility fee is in that zone, because as we know, in RP2, we have a mortgage board. We have some very rural forms of development, and then we have urban form development out there, and you have to assess those differently based on Florida law. So what I would suggest to you is that I would ask you to continue this item so that it can be further studied. The development industry is happy to work with the commission on this. We think it should be put into the larger review of your mobility fee study that you're working on right now. So I appreciate your time. We're happy to work with you. Thank you.
That closes the public hearing. No, sir, I don't have you on the list.
It was closed, sir.
Pardon me?
It was closed when I walked in.
It was clo, come on. State your name. You have three minutes.
For the record, and I won't take three minutes, Michael Brooks, 606 Madison Street, Tampa 33602. I will reiterate what Ms. Mottzinger said and what Mr. Kramer said. I'd also point out that what has been presented to you is an amendment or adoption of an amended study. The amended study and the fees that are associated with those are based on tables, and in 2016, we didn't know at that time what the revenue assumptions should be that go into the calculation. So there were multiple tables based on multiple tax scenarios, sales tax scenarios. No half cent, one half cent, based on 10 years, 25 years, 15 years, but none of those reflect actually what the sales tax that just passed was. So you would, in effect, be adopting an amended study that doesn't reflect what we know to be fact today. And so for that additional reason, I would agree with my colleagues that this should be open and continued.
Okay. Thank you. Is anyone else wishing to speak on D1? Couple of, state your name, sir. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Willie Nun. I am the president of Homes by West Bay and Casa Fresca Homes. We are the developer and builder of Hawkstone, which is a 1,000 to 1,100-unit community that covers three approved zonings in the RP2 district. The first phase of development is almost complete, and our model homes will be open in 60 to 90 days. By law, impact fees and mobility fees collected from this project should be used for the benefit of the project. Now, I've supported impact fee increases and the mobility fee increase through the years, at times to the chagrin of some of my colleagues and peers in the home-building industry, because we need infrastructure. And I could consider supporting this increase if I knew that infrastructure were to be delivered as part of it. You know, I am not aware that there is any infrastructure currently planned for the area. In fact, in the last 12 months, the only thing I'm aware of that's happened is the extension of Big Bend Road from its current terminus to Palm River V Road was taken off the long-range plan. And I think that, you know, if we're going to talk about this, that might be something that we consider, that in hindsight, that may be a mistake. We are the only active project affected by what's at issue here, and that seems awfully specific to me, and I don't know why. We're a significant stakeholder in what's being discussed here, and we were never reached out to for comment, and we, at this point, we have about $20 million in the ground invested in this project, and because we are the only project that would be, that's active and soon to be open, affected by this, I would strongly disagree with the statement that we would not be affected. I mean, this move singles us out and would cost our project approximately $2 million with no apparent infrastructure that's planned for the money to be spent on. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on item D1? Anyone else wishing to speak on item D1? Close the public hearing. Commissioner Oberman, you recognize?
Thank you. Clearly, there's an opportunity for us to get this right, and I'm very much interested in doing just exactly that. I too thought that there was a little bit of interesting in the report that I noticed as well, but didn't really pick up the difference, and because RP2 never made any sense to me in the first place, I'm still trying to figure out why we should do this. But in abundance of caution, where we really do need to discuss how our fee structure operates, and we have several workshops scheduled between now and when we could, in fact, put something that makes common sense and the best responsible action, I'd like to suggest or move that we do continue this item to March 4th at the BOCC meeting to include all points mentioned today, making sure the subject matter regarding RP2 discounts that are referenced there and all other categories are covered in the final Tindell Oliver updated study. The updated study, as was mentioned earlier today, should be completed by February 20th. We've got several, also several workshops scheduled between now and then to discuss the impact of our growth strategies. The report provided us today is only partially updated, and it appears that the update to the sections that relate to RP2 are not complete. So I think it would make sense to have the full report. I like, I think everyone on this board would like to get these issues resolved as quickly as possible, but I'm concerned about the process, and I'd like to see us do it in a manner that makes sense to all parties. So I move to continue the item to March 4th, 2020, BOCC meeting.
There's a motion by Commissioner Oberman, second by Commissioner Murman, to continue this to March 4th, 2020. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize? To the motion.
Thank you. Yes, I will not be supporting the motion. I really think that we have, there has been ample notice. I mean, this is unbelievable. The mobility studies, we're supposed to have been completed. This is the eternal stall. I don't even see how, but for the mobility studies in 2016, which actually lowered rates and has significantly, from the impact, former impact fees, that there hasn't been an opportunity to support any increased, you know, impact fees on anything since 2004 with schools. Zero, zero, because we haven't done it. And I was involved in the 2016 as a citizen prior to that, and I know that the final tables that were issued actually, for years, we have not even reached the level of the impact fees that were formally in place through the mobility fee system, not to mention $100 million in returns of impact fees. I'd just like to ask our counsel, do you feel confident that this is legally sufficient, the notice that has been done?
The notice is, well, see, so per statute, you need 90 days' notice to increase a fee. So the ad for the hearing expressly stated the fee increase, and the effective date wouldn't be till May 1st. As to the distinction between the language being removed from the study, so the version that was attached to this item, if adopted, it just says that all projects within the urban service area get assessed the urban rate, and all projects in the rural get assessed at the rural rate. So it would be providing notice as of the effective date of that, that that's what would be happening. So I know there's also some conversation about the updated study, and yes, that's underway, and it's going to include the most recent and relevant data, recent localized data, and certainly, if it's the board's wish to bring it back at that time, that can also be done. But yeah, in answer to your question, Commissioner Kemp, the version that would be adopted today would just state that if you're in the urban assessment district, you're assessed urban; if you're in the rural, you're assessed rural. It wouldn't say, it would remove the part that treats the RP2 as urban, even though it was in the rural.
Thank you. And I would say too that the, and I'll be, I'll talk about this later, but I'm going to be providing alternative information from the information that this board was provided on impact fee comparisons by counties, which I thought was very selective and really wasn't good information going forward. But I'd be very disappointed to have this continued. I think it's time to get this done. This is not, there has been ample, ample notice for months to every one of these individuals about this, and if this was an issue, it could have been raised before. There's no reason. We have a very good study on hand from 2016 that we've relied on. This was an option that we were given that we, or that the board at that time was given, but probably, I don't even know how they ended up passing something like this, but it certainly doesn't meet the needs. And I think we are in a posture to continue, to not continue to just vote on this today. Consider it, vote on it, and deal with it.
Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate all the comments that have been made, but I gotta tell you, historically, what we went through at this commission on this dais in getting to where we got on the mobility fee in 2016 and previous, it was a long process. We had workshops, public hearings. We had, it was very extensive. And you know why? Because these guys, development guys that you all are after, they provide thousands of jobs to people in our community. So we have to be very careful.
So we have to be very careful, very fair, because it's not hurting their pocket. We're hurting the pockets of the people they employ. And that's what concerns me. And I think we have to be more than fair, more than open, more than transparent when we make any changes going forward. And that's why I was looking forward to the Tindell study and its completion. And now, and I'm hoping that our board will support that because I think it is, we have to be very deliberate and we've got to see the results and facts that support any kind of increase coming out of any study. So I'm just, I'm gonna obviously support the motion because I seconded it. But I think we, this is the right thing to do based on what we've done in the past in relation to this subject. Thank you.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the motion, I just want to start by saying that the county attorney's office has told us that we have legally sufficient backup materials. So I believe we have legally sufficient backup materials, period, because I have the utmost confidence in our county attorney's office. However, in the abundance of caution, since the county administrator is, is recommending that he would like for the board to see these red line pages that, that aren't legally required to be in the backup material, I'll support the motion to continue. I do have a question for the, for the county administrator. If this is continued to March 4th, are you able to, to present to the board by then a, a proposed project list of what, of what the increased impact fee dollars from the RP2 areas would, would, would fund? Those exact dollars?
What we can show you is the adopted transportation plan the board approved. That's the only relevant document and that was what was submitted to the IOC. And so if there are projects in the board-approved list that are in the RP2, then that's where they would be. So that's available now. I mean, it's already been acted on, so.
I'd, I'd like to have a briefing with you and pertinent staff on that between now and March 4th, should this item be continued.
Sure. Yeah.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. Part of the reason our roads are overcrowded and we are $9 billion in the hole behind in transportation needs is that developers have not been paying their fair share of infrastructure costs. And this means that the taxpayers have to pay the developer's share. No one ever says that they want the taxpayers paying the developer's share, but some people do want the taxpayers paying the developer's share as long as possible. So they suggest delays. They say we need more studies. They say we should phase in the fees. They say we need more discussion. Every time we try to press to take the burden from the taxpayers, we are met with reasons why we should put it off a couple more months and, and make the taxpayers pay the developer's share a little bit longer. This item was proposed December 4th, seven weeks ago, almost two months ago, which is plenty of time for people to have reviewed the backup and discuss all aspects of this issue with our county staff, with us elected officials, and with their attorneys who are showing up today saying they just looked at this bill by the Midnight Oil last night. This is a very small policy decision. This is not a major setting of, of impact fees. It doesn't depend on the information in the study. This is a policy decision by us of whether to include RP2 in the same tier of urban fees, which, or rural fees. It should be in the rural fees. That's a policy decision by us. We have plenty of, of studies and backup material to make that small policy decision. It's an opportunity for, to move one step forward and yet we are met with more arguments about just delaying, delaying, delaying a little bit more. We certainly have been careful and deliberate, as Commissioner Merman referred to, in setting mobility fees in the past. And that's why, in a recent study, a recent report by county staff at a land use workshop, we learned that this county has collected less than $80 million in the last 14 years in transportation and mobility fees combined. Less than $80 million. This was Kevin Bricki's report to us, since, in the last 14 years. We all know that doesn't widen three miles of road. We really need to move forward, take this low hanging fruit, take a step and, and begin making developers pay their fair share and taking that burden off the taxpayer. So I will not support any more delays to this, to this small motion. And Commissioner Kemp, I want to thank you for doing the research to find several of these cost-saving opportunities to help us pay for the infrastructure needed for new development, from the AGRF fee that you dug up to pay for water infrastructure that, to reinstate.
To the motion.
And we are met with delay, delay, delay on all of them. And I wish that, I think we could use more help and less, less obstacles in this, in this effort that the, that the citizens are asking us to do.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I'd like to amend the motion to bring it back at the next board meeting on February 5th, so that, you know, we have sufficient notice that the continuation be February 5th, not all the way out till March.
We have an amendment by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Well, I came in here today prepared to oppose the ordinance change. Candidly, if, if I felt that the votes were today, I would make a substitute motion to deny consideration of this ordinance change, but I don't think the votes are there. I just want to point out, and I'm going to oppose the amendment and I'm going to support the continuance. I'm going to oppose the amendment and based on the transparency process and fairness concerns with the industry. And I just want to point out that, and Commissioner Merman alluded to this, 2016, the mobility fee increase, which was three times, I believe, the, of the impact fees, that was an exhaustive process. The industry was, was heavily involved and at the end of the day, they supported it. So I think that's important to, to point out. But I'm going to oppose the, the amendment. I'm going to support the, the continuance. But when it comes back, whether it's February or March, I again will oppose moving forward.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you. And Commissioner Kemp, just so you have all the facts in front of you with respect to your amendment, I just want to say for the record that I had planned for quite some time to be absent from the February 5th meeting. There is, there is an opportunity for February 19th though, possibly.
Okay. We have a, a motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Smith, an amendment to the, to the motion. See no further discussion. We're voting on the amendment. Please record your vote.
Motion failed, six to one. Commissioners Hagan, Kemp, Miller, Merman, Overman, and White voted no.
I'll make another amendment to change it to February 19th.
Amendment by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Smith, to the motion to have it on February 19th. See no further discussion. Please record your vote.
Motion failed, three to four. Commissioners Hagan, Miller, Merman, and Overman voted no.
We're now back on the original motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Merman to continue this to March 4th, 2020. See no further discussion. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Kemp voted no.
Ms. Merman.
Takes you to your next time certant 1015 F3, which is Commissioner Merman's item.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And as I'm making my comments, I would like to ask our state attorney, Andrew Warren, our public defender, Julianne Holt, if you'd all like to come up to the podium with Sarah Couture. And she's going to give a very brief report on fees and fines on, that have resulted in people's driver's licenses being suspended. And I think this really hit home to me quite a bit. We have, in 2017 alone, over 1.1 million suspension notices. They make up 72% of all suspension notices that year were for unpaid fees and fines. And that's not for dangerous driving or public safety concerns. And so I just, I thought this was an issue. There are two bills, one in the House, one in the Senate, companion bills. And to address this issue, it is getting bipartisan support. And I think that actually, after they're done speaking, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, to have a resolution enacted to support those two bills, which I believe would be signed by you.
Before we do that, I need to call on the secretary, corner secretary to correct something. What was the correction?
Motion failed, one to six, not six to one.
Gotcha.
That's, oh.
For the record, for the record, for the record. Okay, you want to?
Okay. So with that, I'm going to introduce Sarah, is it right, Couture?
Yes, ma'am.
And she is going to give us the brief report on these fees and fines.
Thank you for having me today, Commissioner Merman. My name is Sarah Couture and I am the Florida State Deputy Director for the Fines and Fees Justice Center. Why am I here today? To highlight Florida's counterproductive practice of suspending drivers' license for unpaid criminal and traffic court debt and what we believe are solutions to that problem. The Fines and Fees Justice Center is a national nonprofit. We're focused on creating a justice system that treats individuals fairly, ensures public safety, and community prosperity, and is funded equitably. Why are we working in Florida? In 2017, as Commissioner Merman alluded to, over 1.1 million suspension notices, making up nearly 72% of all suspension notices issued that year, were for unpaid fines and fees, not for dangerous driving such as DUIs or public safety concerns. In total, nearly 2 million Floridians currently have a suspended driver's license. On the presentation screen right now, you can see the basis for the suspensions of drivers' licenses in 2017. And you can see that failure to pay was over, was the 1.1 million, the 72%. I'd also like to point out that child support, failure to pay child support is its own category. So it's not included in this failure to pay category. So our bills would not touch that. Hillsborough County, how do we compare? You can see that we are ranked in number 14 out of 67. You want to be 67. You do not want to be number one, as Orange County is. You can see that total suspensions were 91,306 and out of those suspension notices, 68,000 of those, so 75%, were for failure to pay fines and fees. It's important to note that our clerk here in Hillsborough County does not suspend for unpaid criminal debt, except criminal traffic. This is a comparison of Hillsborough County compared to the suspension rate, compared to race and poverty census data. The Hillsborough County clerk was able to provide us address level data that allowed us to do this. The map shows that ZIP code 33610 has the highest rate of suspension notices. There were 11,683 issued. That falls in District 3, Commissioner Miller, as well as a small portion of District 2 out in Mango, Commissioner Hagan's district, as well as all of the at-large commissioners. The second ZIP code was 33612, again, Commissioner Miller's district and the at-large. There were 10,220 issued there. The impact of suspensions. 83.7% of jobs in Tampa Bay would require over three hours of daily commuting if they were to use public transportation. 30% of jobs nationwide require the use of a motor vehicle during work and more and more job applications require a driver's license. There have been studies that show that 42% of people who have their driver's license suspended lose their job. On the screen right now, I have an impacted individual. Her name is Valencia. Valencia was released from prison and moved to Tampa a year and a half ago for a fresh start. She tried to find jobs but had to have a driver's license and she does not because she has a suspension for unpaid court debt. She couldn't find a job because of that and the bus fare, the buses would take too long to get her to where she needed to go. She eventually found A Brown Ministries and became a ready-for-work client and successfully graduated from there, as well as feeding Tampa Bay's Fresh Force program. As soon as she graduated and walked across the stage at Fresh Force, she received a job offer and is currently working at the Wawa at Columbus and 50th Street. She had to pay $896 recently as a down payment to the clerk of court in Escambia County, as well as a $300 reinstatement fee to the DMV in order to get her license reinstated. She still owes $821 but is now on a payment plan because she saved up that $896 down payment and she is looking forward to getting out from under that. Solutions for Florida. House Bill 903, Incentive Bill 328. They end driver's license suspension for unpaid criminal and traffic court debt and at the same time creates a uniform reasonable payment plan. The bills are designed to keep Floridians working and to provide a path for them to pay their debts. They are about accountability and compliance and they are also about increasing collections for the clerks. What are others doing? In the past two years, Mississippi, Idaho, Montana, Washington DC have all stopped suspending licenses for non-payment, while Texas and Virginia have made some positive changes to their lives as well. Fines and Fees Justice Center has a national campaign called Free to Drive that launched on September 10th in 2019 in Washington DC that is focusing on this work nationwide. Our campaign here in Florida is called Driving Success and as you can see, I have a list of supporters up here from Uber, Southern Poverty Law Center, as well as our public defender and our state attorney, who I'd like to invite up, if that's okay, for some brief comments.
Good morning, Mr. Lawrence.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you for the opportunity to address the commission briefly. I'm just here to offer a prosecutor's perspective on this important issue. In 1830, federal law abolished debtors' prisons, but over the past generation, they've made a comeback. And in Florida and in Hillsborough today in 2020, we still criminalize poverty. We trap people in the criminal justice system solely because they're poor. And suspending driver's license is one of the huge contributors to that. As Ms. Couture said and as Commissioner Merman alluded to, most of the driver's license suspensions in Florida are financial-based. Very few have to do with traffic safety. They're ineffective, that is, the suspensions are ineffective and actually coercing people to pay the fines and fees that they owe. And there are significant and troubling collateral consequences. No license often means no way to get to your job. We are putting people in a position where they have to choose between breaking the law and putting food on their table. The legal consequences escalate. We trap people in the system through driver's license suspensions and people frequently end up in jail or even prison as a result. This is an issue frankly that affects us all. It wastes tax dollars. It wastes time and energy, time and energy that could be spent focusing on more serious crimes in our community. It takes people out of the workforce, which is why you have economic groups supporting it, and it exacerbates existing inequalities in our community. This is not a partisan issue. This is an issue about public safety, about efficient use of government resources, and about fairness and compassion. For the past three years, our office has tried to find smart, strategic problem-solving approach to problems in the criminal justice system. This is a problem that we can solve and I would encourage the commission to support this legislation to reduce the criminalization of poverty here in our this legislation to reduce the criminalization of poverty here in our community. Thank you.
Mr. Warren, that wasn't against you. It smelled like something's burning, so you may have been burning up the mic.
Yeah, sorry.
Can I just have you state your name for the record?
Of course. I'm State Attorney Andrew Warren. And I didn't light anything during the brief time I was up here.
Thank you, sir. Was Ms. Holt going to say anything?
Oh, come on. Come on.
At least you have a cup in your hand.
Never known you'd be shy.
No, I'm not being shy. I was being very courteous of the time period here. But Julianne Holt, Public Defender, 13th Circuit. And I'm actually someone that started my career working in the clerk's offices. So just to give you an idea of how we're talking in terms of money, when you used to get a traffic ticket, your court cost was about $8. And now, you don't touch traffic court for less than $150, $250, $350. So you can see just how much money we're talking about. And I think the importance of the bills that are being run right now is it's to create, really, a uniform system also on how people can get out of this cycle of poverty and cycle of the cost of fines and court costs and things of that sort, because you really have no uniformity across the state. So that's really important. And what's more important, I think, here is that this is truly data-driven for a change. And we shouldn't have, have to have state attorneys and public defenders and judges and clerk's offices come together to try and just address this problem in the community that we live in. We should have a way for everyone to work through this system throughout the state of Florida. I, along with Mr. Warren, have tried really hard to try and reduce the caseloads in our office from cases such as driver's license that are suspended for not paying your fines and costs that become felony cases. One-third of my caseload last year was enhanced misdemeanors that become felony cases because of the statute. Clearly, that's an unintended consequence of legislation that has been created. But it shouldn't rely on myself and Mr. Warren to try and work together to do these things. What we should do, I think, is support legislation that really puts this into a better context for our, for our community. Commissioner Miller, you and I have worked for years on the ZIP Codes that we're talking about, and as you know, those are challenging ZIP Code communities. It isn't that people don't want to pay the fines, it's the fact that they don't economically have the ability to do so. I want you to know that we have cases, hundreds of cases pending, that report to the court system every 30 days, just to see if they've been able to pay the $50 towards the $2,000 that they owe. And that shows you the kind of resources that we're using. So I, along with the state attorney and with Ms. Couture, urge you today to please consider passing a resolution in support of the legislation that's pending, and I promise you that this will be a better use of all of our resources in the future. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I'd like to close by mentioning our Driving Empty report that you all received a copy of that was released last fall. That takes a deeper dive into the data that we received from the DMV statewide. We also, on Tuesday, released a set of interactive maps that are available on our website, where you can go and click on counties, and they look at all different types of data that we've collected regarding the suspensions, the suspension notices, as well as poverty data that we've also gathered. We ask you to consider joining this list of supporters to end the failed practice of driver's license suspensions for non-payment on fines and fees. Thank you for the time today.
Thank you. Commissioner Merman, you're going to have a motion, but you're right, two of those major ZIP Codes that you call are in my district, and I live in one of them. So I know exactly what you're talking about. So Commissioner Merman, thank you, and you're recognized for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is going to go a long way to help people dig themselves out of the hole that they're in, in trying to pay these fines. Yes, my motion will be to receive the presentation by Sarah Couture of the Fines and Fees Justice Center, and to approve a resolution supporting the passage of House Bill 903 and its companion, Senate Bill 1328, which seeks to modernize Florida's fines and fees structure while providing for consistent and reasonable payment plan options to ensure ex-offenders can successfully reintegrate into society and meet financial obligations.
There's a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you very much for asking for this support. You know, in the example that Ms. Couture used of the woman that had $898 of fines, for someone who makes $856 an hour, which is our Florida state minimum wage, that is 104 hours or 15 weeks of work to pay those fees. And to do that without a car, and possibly while you're trying to raise a family, as many of the people who live in 33610, I lived there for 22 years, so I get it, and I know the community quite well, is critically important that we look at not only supporting this legislation, but also how our policies address the inequities within our community, and how we invest our resources to make sure that we keep families whole and healthy. So I will heartily support this. Thank you very much for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Yes. I'd also like to thank Commissioner Merman for bringing this forward. I, as an attorney, worked for, worked with many clients that were caught in this trap of terrible debt that they could never get out of, and really caught in the maelstrom of our courts, and in and out, in all kinds of situations. So we, this needs to be something that's changed. And I know that, I was just a little worried about how this would change, and I called up our state attorney, and that's when I had learned that he was very much supportive of working for these, for these bills. And so I'm very much in support, but I just think it's so important that people are no longer trapped in the system in this way because they don't have adequate finances. And we really, I mean, that's something I think, obviously, the state has to look at in a, in a way that frees it up. But I appreciate the work that's being done also here in Hillsborough County to, by the state attorney, to restore people's rights in regards to this, this burden.
Okay. Before we vote, I saw Mr. Wagner. Where did he go? I don't know where he went. Anyway, Mr. Merrill, you get to Mr. Wagner and let him know that if this passes, that we want this on our priority list of legislation support. This is going, yeah, it's going to be an honor for me to sign it, to tell you the truth. We have a motion by Commissioner, Mr. Merman, and second by Commissioner Overman. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote. He'll get the message.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill.
Okay, that takes us to your 10:30 time certain F2, which is Commissioner Kemp's item.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. This is an item that we have with regards to the Susteney Foundation. I'm really happy to welcome you here, so I'm going to have them talk a bit about the Susteney Foundation and the work that we want to continue and work with here in Hillsborough County. We have Andrea Chaney, President of Susteney, to do a short presentation with Lori Belovich. She's the Director of Susteney.
So thank you for having us, and on behalf of the Board of Directors, we are so excited to be here. We have been on a mission for over a decade to introduce best sustainable practices to businesses in and around Hillsborough County. Our mission is to advance sustainability efforts in Tampa Bay by building partnerships, sharing information, and engaging in initiatives that protect, preserve, and encourage responsible use of our natural resources. We are Tampa Bay's local carbon offset program. Through donations, we fund anything through, in many grants, from grow towers at local schools to upcycling, thrift store items, and the proceeds help a homeless shelter. And our Seed to Sustenance program, which we are very proud of, is our Community Garden Matching Fund. This year, thank you for your support, in collaboration with Hillsborough County, we are doing the largest single-day tree planting. We're a group of doers, as much as we are a vocal, forward-looking proponents for changing how businesses create positive impacts in our community. Stakeholder expectations continue to grow as companies strive towards new levels of social responsibility and sustainability. And so thank you for your support, because it's our intent to introduce a public-private nonprofit partnership called Sustainability at Work. It's a series of internet, interactive workshops that provide our county businesses an opportunity to hear from experts, local green team leaders, and connect with peers to share best sustainable practices. We see these workshops as a platform to accelerate local, feasible solutions, and that the concept of sustainability equals financial value. As our community invests in this mega trend that is sustainability, finally, and moves towards a low-carbon society, we'd like to help show companies how to tackle this challenge proactively while also being profitable. Thank you for your service, and on behalf of the Susteney Foundation, thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. So I just wanted to bring the Board's attention to Susteney and our kind of partnership moving forward, which I would really like to see expand. As you all know, I've been on the sustainability, renewable beat, low-carbon, net-zero future for Hillsborough County. And with that, I'll just make a motion to approve an agreement with the Susteney Foundation, Inc., to provide operational support in program development and delivery for entrepreneurs and small businesses in Hillsborough County to promote and implement sustainable practices in their businesses or for others, which will positively impact and increase social, environmental, economic sustainability of both their businesses and Hillsborough County. The agreement allows for a total cost of $25,000 in services, which was previously approved in our budget.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Overman. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to one, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill?
That takes you to your 11:00 AM time certain G1.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Lyons, Public Works. Commissioners, we're bringing a staff report back to you today. On November 8th, the Board asked us to come back to develop a plan to review the county's inventory of properties, excluding conservation lands, to identify any possible exploration of lost burial sites. Since that time, what we've, we've looked at our inventory of properties, and we have about almost 2,800 parcels, a combined acreage of about 22,000 acres. Some of those parcels do have structures, but most of them are small pieces of non-developed land. We've also looked at, our staff has also looked at any existing public records that are available with regard to cemetery and property records, and we've not found anything as of yet. Kind of going a little bit further onto that, we've engaged Dr. Erin Kimmerly with the USF Department of Anthropology, who has extensive background in researching these type of projects. So what we're looking to do is to integrate further historical research, collaboration with various local organizations that may have historical knowledge of cemeteries and burial grounds, and the use of technology that where we can further investigate these county properties to see, to vet those, to see if there's potential on that. With that, I will introduce Dr. Kimmerly, who's got a short presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Kimmerly, good morning.
Well, good morning. My name's Erin Kimmerly. I'm a forensic anthropologist, Associate Professor at USF, and also the Executive Director for IFIS, which is the Florida Institute for Forensic Anthropology and Applied Science. The mission of our work is pretty simple. We conduct research and provide technical assistance to local and state governments in the areas of death investigations, homicide, cold case, missing persons. We've also done a number of historic cemetery projects here locally, as well as in other states, Philadelphia and so on. Some of our statewide projects have been the Arthur Dozier School for Boys, where we located and exhumed burial ground there, as well as the Florida Cold Case Initiative, Missing in Florida Day, and other similar-type events. So just want to thank you for this opportunity to be here and really taking a proactive leadership role in this issue, because you'll see it's a, it's a very common problem.
Excuse me a minute. Can you get her mic a little closer to her?
Closer.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So last year, when the Zion Cemetery was rediscovered in Tampa, began, the Times began reporting about it, we pulled together a group of researchers to look at this issue and the question of historic cemeteries, and put together a list of those that have been destroyed or were at risk. And the group that I have here just would point out that this is archaeologists, GIS experts, a number of different experts from USF and the community that do this type of work, and we've worked together on many projects. And so it was an easy, sort of natural transition to start looking at this issue. There's also a number of people in the community from different organizations that we work with. Many of them were very instrumental in helping with the Dozier School project and other similar projects, from the medical examiner and the sheriff's office, who we routinely do casework for, to genealogists, resources through the USF library and digital collections, as well as people in the church community and who do community outreach. We've also been on the Zion Task Force for the Tampa Housing Authority and helping with This problem is very, you know, common throughout Florida and throughout the United States. In 1999, the Florida Legislature put together a task force to look at abandoned and neglected cemeteries. They put together a list of over 3,500 documented cemeteries, and close to 50% were, had been destroyed or disrupted at some point. So it's, like I said, a very common problem. It's important to point out that we differentiate between cemeteries and burial grounds, especially when you're trying to ultimately know if they've all been recorded, or if there are other cemeteries that may show up. That just has to do with the documentation that exists and the way in which it was used at the time, and what has happened to it. There's many burial grounds that have never been documented and will doubtlessly continue to be discovered as there's construction and development. The primary issues for us are helping to locate such cemeteries and burial grounds, and our goal right now is focused on the countywide, county-owned properties. And then some of the other work has to do with extending beyond that and helping to develop recommendations and ideas about how to handle this issue. The methods we use are, step one would be called a desktop GIS analysis, where we use all sorts of historical records, death records, imagery, historic maps, documents, church records, community interviews, and put together a sort of comprehensive source to validate where these cemeteries are, and then also the boundaries, because sometimes that's a separate issue, is what those boundaries have changed over time. Ultimately, though, this can be followed up. We do field work, what we call ground truthing, where we use remote sensing and excavation to determine that the burials are in fact there. And you can do this without disturbing the burials, but that's one question that's come up a lot, is, well, historic cemetery was allegedly moved, was it in fact moved? And so the way in which we do that is through field work and careful testing. So I just want to thank you again for your time and taking a proactive position on this issue. Thanks.
Thank you, doctor. Commissioner Hagan, I think you were the one that brought this forth, and I'm going to call on you at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to first thank you for that excellent presentation. Board members, if you recall, back in November, I brought this issue forward as a result of the rediscovery of a cemetery around King High School and the likelihood of finding additional cemeteries. And what do you know, and there's a story online in today's paper about a forgotten cemetery being found in Odessa. As I stated in November, as one of the single-largest landholders in Hillsborough County, we have an obligation to be a good steward of the public land. As John indicated, we have over 22,000 acres and 2,800 parcels, excluding conservation lands. And to say that this is a challenging exercise would be an understatement. As our backup states, few historic burial grounds or cemeteries be an understatement. As our backup states, few historic burial grounds or cemeteries have condition assessments, inventories, master plans, or preservation maintenance plans. So we partnered with USF, and as was stated, there's been a preliminary review of currently owned county land by cross-referencing all readily available cemetery and property records. Now we will engage in a more methodical and comprehensive analysis with the objective of to develop procedures and resources that will ensure at-risk cemeteries and burial grounds within Hillsborough County are identified, documented, and maintained. I think it's also important to point out that we will create procedures for us to evaluate future land acquisition to ensure that we do not, you know, buy any questionable land. So again, thank you very much for your work and the presentation. I thank staff for their work, and I'm happy to move approval of the item. I do need to ask Mike, do we need to give any other direction or any other action you need by the board as far as being able to move forward?
I think we're ready to move forward.
Okay, great. Well, I'm pleased to move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Merman. Any further discussion, seeing none. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Ms. Merrill?
That concludes your time certens, and we move to the regular agenda with item B1, Conservation Environmental Lands, ELAP item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Forrest Turberville, Conservation Environmental Lands Management. The item for you today actually has two components, two requests. The first is to approve by supermajority vote a contract with Brian Kirby to acquire approximately 43 acres that are located within the Cypress Creek Preserve for $685,000 as part of the J and K Platt ELAP program, and also to authorize staff to complete the transaction in accordance with the contract. The contract is part of your backup. The contract includes a prorata acreage adjustment based upon $15,950 per acre for up to two acres. The purchase price is below the highest appraised value of the two appraisals prepared for the county. However, it is 1.1% above the average appraised value. Therefore, in accordance with Section 125 Florida statutes, the board is required to approve this contract by a supermajority vote. Existing ELAP bond proceeds will be used to fund the $685,000 purchase price, associated transactional costs not to exceed $15,000, and capital management costs not to exceed $20,000. Total capital costs associated with this acquisition will not exceed $751,900. Annual operating costs of approximately $1,500 can be accommodated within the existing departmental budget. The second request is to approve a budget amendment to realign $20,000 within the ELAP Bond 2019 Fund currently budgeted in the ELAP Acquisition Project, that's the 67 million that was approved back in August, and realign that to the ELAP Restoration CIP Project, and that's in order to provide adequate funding for the initial fencing, restoration, and exotic plant control of the 43-acre parcel. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Smith. This requires a supermajority vote. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Merrill?
Item B2.
Yes, Commissioners, this is a county attorney item that was a carryover from the land use meeting, and so this was our attempt to put an item on the board's agenda that would allow us to continue to discuss this. There, we're open to whatever direction the board wants to give us. This was suggested that we could further review and try to continue to provide information on the events that happened back in 2002 and 2003, and then see if we can find a resolution with all of the stakeholders in a way that's satisfactory to the board.
Okay. Before I call on Commissioner White, have we ever talked about cost sharing on this issue?
No, we haven't gotten to that point, to be honest with you. We haven't had those discussions.
Okay. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you. And to the chairman's point, I think cost sharing, you know, should be on the table and part of the discussion. And as you have discussions with the two sides, you know, I'd also like to see if any county design standards can be waived, because it's such a short stretch of road, so that it's an existing road, it's there, it's not causing any problems. But I'd at least like to see that on the table if the motion passes. So I'd like to read a motion that will incorporate staff's recommendations, but also include a deadline. And that would be to direct the county attorney's office and the county administration to review the enforcement of a public dedication condition regarding Palm River Road East-West Extension, also known as Estuary Lakes Drive, and to reach out to all stakeholders to find a resolution and report back to the board at the February 19th, 2020 meeting.
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner White. That was, that motion, I think encompasses everything we need to do. I just do want to make sure, one of the sides in this whole issue has not really opined to us. We've only really heard from one side. So, and I just want to make sure that this is, that cost sharing does come into play, because I know the county should not have to bear all the costs of the infrastructure for that project. But I also want to make sure that the county acts as like the mediator, and maybe they attempt to convene the parties so that we don't hear from either side that nobody contacted, you know how it goes. We get caught in the middle of all that all the time. But I just want to make sure all sides are going to be there, and that the county works hard to try and get all sides together and get this thing worked out.
Commissioner Smith, excuse me. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. And the only thing I want to say is, I would urge caution about waiving the design standards. I'm always very careful about making sure that we are providing safe cycling and pedestrian infrastructure. I know you are too, Commissioner White. So, but that's something I'm going to be looking at very carefully. I just didn't want that to go unsaid in the discussion. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
You know, I guess, looking back at this and then looking at even what's happened in the last few years, because this is, this is a road that meets with the road that the county paid already, six and a quarter million dollars that we paid for basically an internal road in that project. Then this road, which was supposed to be dedicated to the county, never got dedicated to the county for whatever reasons from the original project. I won't go into that, but, and opine on that. But just looking at this, I just, I, I'm supporting the motion, and I think we need to obviously do something about this. But also, you know, we, I also don't want us paying more, all kinds of money for this road. And if there's one road to do the design exceptions on, because I don't, I don't want to hear about investing millions of dollars more in this. And I would say that it would be up to the developers if they wanted to do those to accommodate their communities rather than have that burden be on us. So I would just say, I'm, I'm like not exactly there with that, because I'm concerned about the cost of that. So if there's one road that I'm gonna like say, go with the design exceptions that we seem to constantly make here, that might be it, because it would be on our burden to do that, and I don't think it should be anymore. I mean, we are already so burdened with paying for the infrastructure in this one little project that doesn't even, it's not even gonna serve, you know, the, to me, the kinds of things that we've been talking about. So I'm supporting the motion. I appreciate it. I just wanted to put that out there.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Oh, just briefly. Commissioner Merman, you and I are on the same page. In fact, I used the word mediator with Mr. Merrill in our meeting. So we're very much on the same page.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
And I'm glad to see that we're actually moving this forward. I think it's key to recognize that this board is, has a commitment to making sure that we create connectivity responsibly. So, in the mediation process, whether there's waivers that are needed, but design exceptions or whatever, what we're trying to accomplish here is a way that people who live in that area and work in that area can get from one place to another safely. And right now, there's, that can get compromised because of the circumstance. So as long as that's one of the primary goals of actually starting this process and having the county involved, I would very much like to support this motion.
Ms. Merrill?
Yes, Commissioners, because the motion is to, is to direct us to mediate this, I think I want to place on the record so that we don't go into the mediation, you know, with one arm tied behind our back. We don't believe, my staff doesn't believe there was a condition and a requirement for this to be dedicated. So I want to make that clear. I don't want to go in there in a weak position. But as far as we can tell, we were not required, there was never a condition that we take this road. So what we're doing is trying to broker a deal with private parties for everyone's benefit. But if in the end, you know, the private parties push back and try and lay this on us, I just want to make clear in the record that I'm just gonna tell them, look, you don't have a legal basis for it, and let's negotiate in good faith here, so.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Smith. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Ms. Merrill?
That takes us to item B4. DeBora, are you gonna do this? Scott?
Good morning, Commissioners. DeBora Cromarty-Mency County Attorney's Office. I have with me Scott Trebatowski, Director of Pet Resources. On October 2nd, 2019, the board directed the county attorney's office and county administration to bring back recommendations to strengthen the pet retail sales ordinance and to address dog breeding in the county. I will highlight some of the main points of the staff report that you should have before you, and then turn the mic over to Scott for his comments. On May 26, 2017, the board enacted the pet retail sales ordinance. The current ordinance regulates the sale of dogs and cats by pet retail businesses that existed in Hillsborough County at the time the ordinance became effective. There were two pet, there are two pet retail businesses in the county, Puppies Tampa and All About Puppies. The ordinance also requires new pet retail businesses to sell only dogs or cats obtained from an animal shelter or rescue organization. In addition, the ordinance prohibits retail sale of these animals in public places, places like flea markets and yard sales. The proposal to amend the pet retail ordinance and implement breeder restrictions, you may remember, stems from the September 23rd, 2019 issue, when the court awarded Hillsborough County Pet Resources custody of more than 300 dogs that were living in deplorable conditions. As part of our recommendations, we recommend that the board allow us to address pet retail sales and breeder regulations separately and within different timeframes. This would prevent confusion between the two issues, and also allow us to vet and fully develop the breeder restrictions from the pet retail changes. We think we can bring back the pet retail changes pretty quickly, within actually a month of time if the board so desires. More specifically, as regarding the pet retail sale issues, it is recommended that the grandfather privilege for existing pet retail shops in the county be eliminated, sunsetting approximately two years from now, that is on December 31, 2021. This approximate two-year period will allow existing pet shops the opportunity to transition from their current business models to a more ethical sourcing approach that does not include commercially bred intake animals, like the adoption-based model we currently have. All pet retail sale regulations and penalty provisions governing existing pet retail shops will also sunset at the end of that two-year period, leaving only regulations and penalty provisions that pertain to the adoption-based model. During the two-year period, pet shops will be required to submit proof of sourcing, breeding sourcing conditions from a local humane entity for all remaining unsold dogs and/or cats purchased from a breeder, wholesaler, or distributor to be resold to the public, and will be subject to immediate grandfather termination if this information is falsified. We also recommend that ordinance penalties be placed in a board resolution, which is common among all of our county ordinances, for more expedited penalties for inspection violations, and more stringent penalties for other ordinance violations, like an immediate loss of the grandfather privilege, and impose certain deadlines to make the transfer to an acceptable business model, sterilize all animals in inventory, and sell all unsold dogs and/or cats, which the county is willing to financially assist with. Hillsborough County is one of the few jurisdictions in Florida with a grandfather provision. Should the B O C C decide to terminate the grandfather provision for the existing stores and ban all pet retail as we know it today, the county will not be alone. As stated by many of the public comment speakers today, there are well over 200 jurisdictions in the nation that have pet retail ban ordinances that would include in the United States and Canada. There are also two states that have pet retail ban legislation, that's California and Maryland. Nearly 70 ordinances exist in Florida, including five or so counties. The majority of these ordinance outright ban retail sales and only allow shops to sell dogs and/or cats from rescues and/or shelters. A number of the ban ordinances in Florida do not allow retail sales at all, not even from rescues or shelters. Rather, retail shops are only able to provide space and care for animals owned by rescues and shelters, and maintain at the pet store for the purpose of adopting animals to the public. I think it's important for you to understand that there are six federal court cases that uphold, approximately six, that uphold pet retail sale ban ordinances across the nation. There were two cases in Florida, one in Sunrise, Florida, and one in Sarasota. Claims that were made were violations of the Commerce Clause, Contracts Clause, due process, equal protection, takings clause, and state preemption. They have all failed. All ordinances were upheld in federal court. However, the case that, in Sarasota, was settled with the biggest retail chain known as Petland agreeing to close down the store in Sarasota and to, in order to avoid enforcement. It was also indicated earlier, there are three legislative bills, House Bill 1237, its companion bill, Senate Bill 1698, and Senate Bill 1700. The two companion bills, they do seek to regulate pet retail sales by requiring them to obtain a state permit or license. Other regulations are similar to what we're currently having in our pet retail ordinance, for instance, like prohibiting stores from selling animals from unlicensed breeders and breeders with certain number of direct or non-direct USDA violations or state violations. The bills have preemption language with respect to local ordinances and regulations which prohibit or regulate pet stores. If the bills pass, this could affect the status of the county's pet retail ordinance. As to the second part of our proposal, it addresses breeding regulations. Much of what you see in the report regarding breeding was modeled after Jacksonville, which Scott will come up and discuss in just a few. We took a stab at defining certain terms like breeder. Our current definition in the county ordinance is outdated. And the term hobby breeder, they are starting points. And of course, we'll need to further explore these terms and perhaps other terms that may be needed. We recommend striking the current permitting process in the animal control ordinance and establishing a new and establishing a new permitting licensing process for hobby breeders and other types of breeders that we wish to regulate. This would entail requirements for accreditation and training, inspection and monitoring, registration and yearly renewals, care, treatment, and shelter standards in accordance with standards that will be set out by Florida law, the Animal Welfare Act, USDA, and/or the Humane Society of the United States. We will also include enforcement and civil citation penalties that will be set out in a Board resolution. There's also proposed to be a zoning component that will require hobby breeders and perhaps other breeding facilities to be located in certain zoning districts, similar if not the same as our kennels that are currently governed under the Land Development Code. Those breeding activities that are not regulated will be prohibited. I'll bring Scott up for his comments. Thank you.
Scott Trebatowski, Pet Resources. Today, we're kind of asking for a bifurcated motion from the Board, one to get us started right away on dealing with the pet retail situation. The unique manner in which that ordinance was drafted has created some enforcement issues. I believe the state will have equal difficulty with enforcement, given the fact that the federal government has cut off the majority flow of information needed to make good decisions on whether a breeding facility is up to standards and not. But we feel that by separating the two issues, we can move quickly to address the retail sales and start the process of transition. And then we would like to spend a little bit more time with a multitude of stakeholders when it comes to the breeding. But we have a clear goal that we do not want to see the county burdened for a third time with hundreds of thousands of dollars in debt in costs because an irreparable breeder has shifted that burden onto the county, and we've had to take the care and custody of animals.
Thank you. Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to thank DeBora and Scott for that very thorough presentation. Back in September of 2016, I brought to the Board my grave concerns over the mistreatment of animals by irresponsible and greed-driven breeders known as puppy mills and retailers that all too often turn a blind eye to their important practices. I want to stress that I was not talking about all breeders, just the irresponsible ones. Having initiated a number of animal issues through the years, I knew pet retail sales would be an emotional and somewhat controversial issue. But I underestimated how challenging it would be to adopt an ordinance. For those Board members that were here, it ultimately took eight months. Commissioner Chris introduced his own version, if you will, then we had amendments to his amendments. In the end, we became, I believe, the 70th jurisdiction in Florida to adopt a pet retail sales ordinance. And while many good things were included and we made significant progress, it was a watered-down version. And after two years, staff will tell you that it is overly cumbersome and has been very challenging to accomplish our goal. As a result of the seizure of over 300 dogs in deplorable conditions in Hillsborough County, in October of last year, I asked staff to reexamine our ordinance and determine if there were improvements that could be made and any loopholes that could be eliminated. Initially, we focused primarily on the pet stores because their operation is a primary sales outlet for irresponsible breeders. Eliminating this option is essential to addressing the puppy mill problem. It really never made sense to me to import animals when we already have thousands of unwanted animals in our community, and bringing in only contributes to overpopulation and increased euthanasia rates. Banning the sale of puppy mill dogs would mean more adoption from local shelters and result in a reduction of tax dollars being needed to address this issue. Now, not only did we not go far enough with our pet store regulations, but there is also an absence of any significant effect on commercial breeders in our ordinance. This is an oversight that needs to be corrected, so I commend staff for the bifurcated approach, both pet stores and breeders. As staff said, they're recommending moving forward today with the retail side, but they need to do a little more due diligence on the breeder recommendations. So with respect to the retail side, what has become apparent is that even if we could enforce an ordinance that only allowed the sale of dogs from puppy mills that had no USDA violations, and we cannot do that. But USDA-inspected puppy mills, even with no violations, often have extremely poor facilities. We've all seen the pictures. Even this morning, Dr. Coville showed some of those. It's clear to me that only a complete ban on the sale of commercially bred dogs can end the cruelty. So I'm going to move that staff bring back the draft of changes to our pet retail sales ordinance with respect to the pet retail sales portion at our next meeting, and that they continue to work on addressing the breeder regulations and bring that back within a month. That's the motion.
Another motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Kemp.
I did.
And Commissioner Merman. Anyone else? Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And DeBora, thank you for your presentation. I know we had our briefing the other day. I think I brought up an issue to you about the two elements in the recommendations that I feel conflict each other.
Yes.
And it is the second bullet under item one and the first bullet under item two. The, it says grandfathering privilege will sunset December 31, 2021. But then under item two, it says prohibit any further purchasing of dogs or cats from breeders after the effective date of the ordinance. But if they can't buy, they're out of business. I mean, technically. And so giving them two years, but having that part in there, which, I mean, what do you recommend that we do? Because I do think they are completely contradictory.
Well, I spoke with County Administration, and what we are willing to do is to put the prohibition of further purchasing as a penalty for purchasing and selling dogs and/or cats acquired from breeders with USDA violations.
Okay, I agree with that. Thank you very much. And then the other part was about violations. I didn't feel they were spelled out specific enough. Did you feel that way too?
Yes, ma'am. And I believe you're talking about page three, number three, where it talks about state law violations.
Right.
Yeah, we are willing to enumerate on those as well.
You referenced state statutes in that.
Yes, which would include your health vaccinations, health certificates, and things like that. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I also would like to thank Commissioner Hagan for working on this for so much. I was wondering if it might come back soon. And I know we spent a significant amount of time on this about two years ago. I'd also like to thank Mr. Trebatowski and DeBora Cromarty for their work, because I can, it's just very strong, strong work. When this came up two years ago, there was, our office was deluged in a way we almost had not been about any other issue before. And I had all kinds of horrible pictures coming that, you know, I almost couldn't look at, and all kinds of information, and I had never really had gotten a basis in what was going on. So I did my own research at the time. I was trying to figure out about this. And frankly, abhorrent is not too strong a word. I heard you use it, and I had it written here already. I was shocked, and I thought it was abhorrent, what, the low bar that the USDA standards, which are, were put in place in the 60s. And I just was shocked that you're allowed to do this at all these Midwest breeding places. So even if you don't have a USDA regulation, it is, it is no, you know, no proof of anything. I mean, the, it's just stunning what we allow. And when I had asked about it to staff, they had said that they kind of, I was, I looked and I saw all over the country, there had been a huge shift, this was two years ago, and particularly in Florida, it seemed like, of banning the pet retail sales. And I had not realized that there was this whole movement going on. And when I asked about the fact that the USDA regulations allow this, and I had read about it, they treated the dogs and cats, mostly dogs, as any kind of livestock. You know, it was just, it's just terrible, the conditions that are permitted. So I just, I'm glad to have this brought forward. I think we should join what so many communities or jurisdictions in Florida have done and across the country. And I'm glad to move forward on this. I do have a concern. I don't know if we need to have a motion to this right now. But the two years, after hearing this morning, the testimony about this, and also your concern about the dual requirement there or the conflict, I'm wondering about, because it looked like a more reasonable, there has been two years notice already given. And it looks like a more reasonable shutdown or implementation of the ordinance might be 180 days. So do we have to have a motion and look at that for our staff to bring something like that back?
Yes, ma'am. Right now, we are currently recommending approximately a year. So that's what's in the recommendation now. So to change from that, we would need to have a motion for that.
Can I, I thought it was two years.
No, ma'am. December 31st of 2021.
Okay.
So that's, is that almost two years? Yes, almost two years. I'm sorry. Almost two years.
Okay, so, so I'd like to make-
It's been a long day, sorry.
You know, because of what I have seen and lived through with this, and I think it just is reasonable. We've had a long time dealing with this. So I'd like to make a motion that we look at 180 days. This morning, we heard a lot of testimony about that. They said that there were 25 shops in Los Angeles. They had 180 days, that the average time was 90 days. So two years strikes me as excessive.
Is that an amendment to the motion? Is that an amendment to the motion?
Yes, amendment to the motion, I'm sorry.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Dyes for lack of a second. Mr. Merrill?
Actually, I was going to bring that point up, so I'm glad Commissioner Kemp did. I think the two years was something that I thought was trying to be fair. But I think that 180 days is reasonable, and I would support that as well.
Well, it just died.
I know it did, but if you want to take it up again, I mean, I think that there is a conflict, and I just, none of us want to have to go through this again. And there's no way to track, there's no way to track dogs that come in. And so we've offered, we can offer to buy their inventory, as we did when we, when we had dealt with the breeder here. And I think clearly we can humanely take care of the dogs that they have, and we'll do that. But if you want to bring it up again-
Hold up, hold up, hold up. You're done?
Yeah.
We just have procedural, you can't bring that motion back because it died for lack of a second. So you can bring it back and say 179 days or 181 days.
And I'll move to do 179 days.
Motion for 179 days. There are second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. That's an amendment to the motion. Commissioner Overman, you go to the motion. You don't have to talk about the amendment. Okay, you recognize?
Either way. I too thought that two years was a little too much. When I really looked at it and saw that, you know, while we prohibit any more purchases, you know, there is a time period that these animals that are in a business model that is designed to sell animals, you know, need some time to actually make sure that they find homes. I was going to recommend 90 days because I think in three months, if we were able to come up creatively how to partner with those businesses, especially if they provide excellent facilities to contain them well, before they're sold, it opens an opportunity to partner with them on processing adoptions and other business models. I can't tell you how many people are desperately looking for doggy daycares. So there's ways that these businesses can survive making a transition, and thought that 90 days was adequate. But I'll support the motion at 179 in order to help facilitate making sure these animals find good homes. Thank you.
Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
So Mike, the December 2021 date was just an attempt to, I guess, in fairness-
Exactly.
Okay. And I guess this is for Christine, when it comes back, and I'm going to support the amendment, but when it comes back, we can always, if we wanted to change that, whether lengthen it or reduce the time, we can always do it at that point, right?
I believe you could. The notice would be covering that point. And if the Board, as a result of the public hearing, chooses to tweak that, I think that would be acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, an amendment by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner White for 179 days. We're voting on the amendment only. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We're now on the amended motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner, I'm sorry, it's biased, Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Kemp, Merman, and Overman. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill?
That takes you to item B five, Engineering and Operations.
Good morning, Commissioners. Josh Bellotti, Engineering and Operations. This item is the budget amendment to appropriate the additional revenue generated for FY '20 by the stormwater assessment rates that the Board approved in September. These revenues are being distributed between operations and maintenance, asset preservation, and flood protection, consistent with the theme of the stormwater workshops and presentations received by the Board last summer. As described in the background and backup for this item, an additional $1 million is being allocated to the FY '20 capital improvement program for additional stormwater pipe replacement projects. An additional $3.5 million is being allocated to contracted maintenance services for increased restoration of roadside swales and ditches, and additional side drain replacements. An additional 1.89, excuse me, an additional $1.98 million is being allocated for engineering consultant support for asset preservation and preliminary engineering for advancing future flood protection projects. And an additional 10 positions will be created and funded, as described in the background, to provide project management and delivery for CIP projects, contract management and oversight for outsourced maintenance services, and engineering support for asset management, planning, and modeling. Happy answer. Any questions?
I have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Merman. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Just a quick question. Thank you very much for getting back to my office about the reserve issue. Because I was unclear when I first read it, that the $10 million reserve is actually what we've collected since we changed the fee and concert with everything else. So that made me feel a lot better about going down to almost 3 million and hitting that reserve really hard. But I did have a question regarding the, how it's spent. It suggests that capital programs, department personnel operating in capital outlay, and it, is that because those are outsourced contracts, or are they a combination of the two? It is, a very large piece of the project was the racetrack, I assume. So I'm just, can you help me understand what the biggest chunk of that is spent on?
Of the total $8 million increase? Is that the question?
Of the, yes.
Okay. So the split is a million for capital pipe replacement projects into the CIP. The $3.5 million is being allocated to maintenance. We talked about the maintenance needs ongoing and known maintenance issues that we have with the open conveyance system. So the biggest chunk, $3.5 million, is going to ditch restoration and maintenance. Then a couple million dollars is going into developing future flood protection projects that have been identified through our watershed master plan studies. And then the remainder, the $885,000 is the additional personnel that's being added to oversee that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Sure, no problem.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Merman. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill?
Thanks, Josh. That takes us to Commissioner's section, item F one, Commissioner Kemp's item.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. As you know, I- As you know, I've been looking and reviewing impact fees from all over the state and everything that is happening with them comparatively also to Hillsborough County, and last year I was aware that the Florida House had passed legislation restricting the ability of counties to increase school impact fees by more than 5% in a, a two-year period, so I was looking to see what was going on this year, and this year, there's companion bills that are there, House Bill 637, which has already been heard by a committee, and Senate Bill 1066, and they're pending in the Florida Legislature, and they're up there, they're very severe to restrict the authority of local governments to impose impact fees on developers to fund infrastructure needs created by development. I will tell you that I checked a lobbying list, and there were more than 80 people signed in to lobby at the state on this, many, many of them counties, I'm assuming that the counties and the juris, local jurisdictions that are up there are lobbying because they're concerned that this is restrictive and would really hurt their home rule and local abilities to do what they needed to do, to pay for the infrastructure that they need to have. Also, the developer that we heard from this morning, West Bay Homes, has also signed in on the list, I don't know if he's there in opposition or support, or whatever, but I think we need to make sure that we are watching this and that we are in opposition. The legislation died in the Senate in 2019, but that 5% can come back again on this, such legislation would be permanently devastating to Hillsborough County in particular, our public schools, because the county commission has not updated our school impact fees since 2004, I do not think that this Board understands how, what an outlier we are to not regularly review and update our, our impact fees, and how long it has been, and how little we have done. In very conservative counties across the country have dealt, across the state, Collier County, Lee County, Polk County, which has a very steep increase that they're going over in future years, Hernando County, Orange, Osceola, they have all been looking at impact fees for schools in particular, but all their impact fees in the last couple of years, Sumter County, and Sumter County actually found that because their impact fees have been so low, that they were doing a 25% tax increase in their, their, their tax collection. So this legislation died in the Senate, as I said, in 2019, but can be brought back, it would be devastating to us in particular, a September 2019 study recommends that more than doubling Hillsborough County's school impact fees, because it's been so long, from 4,000 on average to $8,595 for each single family home, and as I said, counties across the state have updated theirs and been on top of them, just to note, school impact fees in other counties, Pasco, $9,028, Manatee, $6,127, Polk, $6,598, to be stepped up to $8,998 in 2023, the study there actually called for almost $12,000 to pay for true costs, Orange, $8,784, Osceola, $11,832, Seminole, $9,000, Collier, $8,790, this is what they're actually charging today, to our 4,000. So Hillsborough County should specifically oppose any efforts by the Legislature to further encroach on home rule by limiting the county's ability to impose and collect impact fees to pay for our infrastructure, we need to stop this shifting on the backs of our taxpayers to pay for infrastructure, someone has to do it, and that's what we're doing right now, so with that, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to oppose any legislation that would restrict or limit the ability of local governments to impose and collect impact fees, and include this in our state legislative program, as well, I'd like us to have a letter in opposition to our delegation, one is, which I believe is, may be signed on as a co, I guess that's a different bill to co-sponsor, to our delegation, the Senate President, the House Speaker, the Minority Leader's Cabinet, and Governor.
That's motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp, for, for adding this, or bringing this forward, and I just want to say that the longer we delay at each of the points that we've been trying to work to, to make our impact fees actually pay the, the developers' fair share and take that burden off the, off the taxpayers, the longer we delay at every turn, the more we risk having our hands tied by the state Legislature this session, there's, there's bill after bill coming in, and, and as you point out, our own studies show we need to raise school impact fees from 4,000 to 8,600, or something at less than 9,000, and that bill that, that they tried to push last time would, would restrict our ability to do any more than 5% a year, so we are so far behind, we really need to catch up before the state Legislature ties our hands, and some of these delays, I honestly suspect, are hoping that we run into that brick wall, so, so I hope we don't, thank you.
Mr. Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp, for bringing this forward and for reiterating that point, one of the reasons why I decided, or actually recommended that we not delay our workshops, and, and while I'm, I'm challenged by the decision this morning to postpone, I think we have to get it right, and as a true proponent of home rule, and making sure that we have the responsibility and the right to take care of our citizens as financially responsibly as we possibly can, that's part of the reason why I've been so urgently wanting to have, you know, the conversation of how we address our fee revenue and fee revenues prior to July 1st, when we get into budgetary season, it is critically important that we know what we're going to be doing before any action is actually put into place and in effect on July 1st, which is typically when many of these bills are put into place and, and enforceable, so it is urgent that we do move forward, and I would love to see this letter go up in the event that we're unable to hit that mark, but I would like to signal that we need to hit that mark, so thank you very much for bringing this forward, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you for your support, and again, I would say, there is no other county in this position, in this state, that would be more hurt by this, because we have been so negligent in doing what we need to do, and so far behind, every other county, and I will provide you with the impact fee analysis to show you exactly how that, that works, so I will be doing that counter to the information that you received yesterday, or the day before, and so, so this is a, a bill that could hurt us more than anyone else, so I appreciate your support, and I'm, thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Smith, seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
Commissioner White's item F4.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as we all know, Hillsborough County currently has approximately 1.5 million residents, and if it keeps going at the rate we've been hearing about at our land use workshops, we'll have about 2 million residents by 2045, if not more, and because of the emergence of pressing issues in our community like transportation, sense of place, and environmental stewardship, the Board has expressed a keen interest in land use policy, we as the Board have a broad amount of, of authority, in fact, the sole authority, in land use policymaking, I know it's paramount to all of us to be good stewards of what our constituents have entrusted us with, it's also important to note that the planning and growth management arm of the Development Services Department has a quite, has quite a policy-intensive function, I'll further remind the Board that there's a clear separation of powers provision in the Hillsborough County Charter that draws a distinction between legislative and administrative functions, I believe it's important for a county administrator and his or her staff to focus on implementing policies that are enacted by the County Commission, this Board has already taken an important step forward with the work being done on the RP2 and WVR2 land use categories, and has expressed through our series of workshops, a desire to continue pursuing significant changes to land use policy in Hillsborough County, keeping all of these things in mind, I think the time has come to have a staff member that's directly accountable to the Board to assist us in land use policy matters, now, some may say that this is growing government, but the proposal right now is to add one single position, and to be quite candid, Commissioners, I think in the five years that I've served on this Board, we've spent far more on consultants than the salary of this one individual might be, I would envision this position to be a pilot program of sorts, to better align land use policy with the Board's legislative powers, and I want to again emphasize that this would just be a first step down that path, I want to test the waters to see if, if this makes sense for the Board and will be practically effective, I'll point out that I've been contemplating this idea for quite some time, because I think it's good public policy, and I've waited until now to bring it forward while we're conducting a county administrator search, so that it is recognized for the policy initiative that it is, and not about any particular personalities. Now, some of you may be on the fence on this matter, I didn't put a lot of information out there with my agenda item, if you are on the fence, I would urge you to at least move it forward today, so that you can have a dialogue with the county attorney's office about your thoughts, and at least see a draft ordinance, there's been a tradition on this Board of doing just that, and a yes vote today does not make a final decision, if you move it forward today, you are at least agreeing to see a draft ordinance, hear from the public, you can always vote it down during the public hearing if you're not supportive of it at that time, so I move to direct the county attorney's office to prepare an ordinance amending the administrative code, if appropriate, establishing the Office of the Land Use Advisor under the Board of County Commissioners, for the purpose of assisting the Board in its legislative decision-making, and due diligence as the elected Board members contend with important land use decisions and future growth in Hillsborough County.
That's a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Still trying to figure out how I feel about this, and that just, I have more questions than, than concern at this point, but, you know, we have a planning commission, and we have an MPO, and while I appreciate that the Office of Land Use Advisor would offer an opportunity to directly report to the Board and serve the Board, which is what our other executive positions are challenged and responsible to do, I think the disconnect is, for me, is that our world is always based on what we do with property, rather than how we serve and build our communities, and so while I appreciate the need to get direct advice that serves the Board of County Commissions on land use issues, it's devoid of issues associated with transportation, and I don't find there to be a separation there, without doing and incorporating transportation as part of our land use policy, we find ourselves in the quandary we're in now, where we've designed how communities can be built without recognizing they have to have the connectivity necessary to have people to be able to take care of their families, get to the grocery store, do the things they need to do, our planning commission brings that advice to us, and our MPO does as well, if we don't listen to them, what makes this situation going to be any different? So I'm, like I said, I'm not suggesting it's a bad idea, I'm just concerned that changing the Charter to address land use only may not solve the challenge we, we have faced with many of the things that we're addressing now, so it's more of a question, what would you recommend, or I'd like to talk-
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you, well, this, this could easily involve transportation as part of the charge of the person, I thought it was interesting, Commissioner White, when you were just describing this, that you talked about our planning and growth management, but actually, that's not, even when our development, our, when I was here in 2004, and I was an aide to Commissioner Castor, it was, planning and growth management, that's been changed to development services, and I think that that is no small change, and it really represents what the department's priorities have been, and, and I really feel that there is a incredible imbalance, and I share your frustration very much, Commissioner White, I understand why you would like land use issues discussed, as well as transportation, I would expect that to be just part of it anyway, because, because that's the way it works, and we, so that I don't think is an issue for me, and, and not from the county administrator, when it comes to land use and impact fees, we need to start getting objective information, and we're not getting that, one frustration for me has been that this Board should be a Board directed, that we hire our own consultants, for one, that those consultants are not ones that the staff recommends to us, too often, we as policymakers are not given policy choices, we should be educated on the policy and given a menu of policy choices, but what I find over and over again, is that what we hear from, from the county, the county administrator and the staff here, is that we're not given those choices, and it's not a neutral, objective position with regards to land use and impact fees, I am committed to making growth pay for its own way, I shouldn't have to be doing all the work and research to give a balanced view to this Board, it's extraordinarily frustrating, and it's not my job, but that's what I find I am in a position to do, a recent example is the misleading chart of impact fees that was sent out earlier this week, I will send you one that actually is reflective of, of, of what y'all should, we, we should be understanding about this, I think I'll probably put it on as an agenda item, I'm trying to figure out what to do, but I will be supportive, most definitely, because I do think what we need, an independent voice that can deal with us, that can give us some analysis of what's coming before us, I don't feel like that's happening, I don't feel like I'm given policy choices and, and informed about what the implications of those policy choices are, over and over again, I just hear about one, one way to go, and, you know, it's more, you know, that there's no options within that, so I, I would really like to at least explore this thought of an independent review that's accountable to the Board, and that is accountable to each of us, in, in terms of the information and the, the analysis that we need to have, that I just, I just feel like isn't available.
Before I call on Commissioner White, Commissioner Smith, I am really concerned that, that the bus has run over our staff the way it just got run over by those comments, Development Services is not a department that works to factor for developers, you all know that, that is absolutely wrong to sit here and say that and insinuate that, that is absolutely wrong, you know that any information that you want my staff, you've been able to get it, any information that you want, you've been able to get it, because to sit here and say that you're doing your, the work that this staff should be doing is absolutely wrong, the staff has not pushed out one red, green, or yellow button up here, they do not, we do that, and any consultant that you want to have, you ask the staff to do it, they will get it, to sit here and say, they hire this, this consultant, so we don't have an opportunity to say anything about it, that's ludicrous, that is absolutely ludicrous, and to throw the staff under the bus like that is absolutely wrong, and I am appalled that anyone will sit here and say that, so I would not be supporting this motion, because in mere fact, we don't need it, we have a dynamite staff that through the years, didn't have the opportunity to work with the planning commission, because I was a planning commissioner, and it was like night and day compared to what it is now, they didn't talk to each other, they didn't even speak to each other, now we're working with the planning commissioner, MPO, and they're working together to get you the information you need for this land use and planning and growth management, all these things we have to have, so I am appalled to sit here and have someone say that our staff is not doing what they're supposed to do, and because we changed the name to Development Services, they're working on behalf of the developers, that's wrong, and I will not be supporting this motion, Commissioner White, you recognize? Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you. Commissioner Overman, I'm going to ask you to support the motion, to at least bring it forward. I'm not asking for a charter amendment. That's a process within itself. I'm asking for an ordinance that would create a direct report. It is not uncommon in an organization when there's a high priority, like land use is for us, to create, you know, a direct report to someone higher up in the organizational chart. In this case, that would be the Board, because land use policy is a legislative function that falls under our legislative powers per the county charter. I'm not asking to usurp the powers of the Planning Commission. They're created by special act of the legislature. I'm not suggesting that we ask that they be eliminated. The MPO, as I understand it, is required under federal law. I'm not asking that, you know, the MPO be usurped in any way, shape, or form. Development Services staff has their hands full with a lot of things that are not in the policy realm, like making sure that inspections are done, and that permitting and plating process is all done properly. There's the land use hearing officer, which involves matters that don't even come to this Board. So, you know, with our focus on policy, I think it's incredibly important to have that person come onboard to at least help guide us in those policy decisions. And, you know, again, not to beat a dead horse, but, you know, we just asked today that you at least move it along and get it to a public hearing, and let's hear from the public. Let's allow Commissioners to speak with the County Attorney's Office. And what I love about this process is that, you know, one Commissioner like me can't just come in and make a motion and say this is how it's going to be done, period. This can be shaped by all the Commissioners. If we move it forward, you know, I'm confident that staff will make the rounds and share draft ordinances with Commissioners and ask for their thoughts and feedback, and it can belong to all of us, not just one Commissioner.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner White, for, you know, thinking outside the box on these important issues and trying to help us figure out some new ways of doing things. I tell you, when I first saw this on the agenda, I wondered what it was about and started thinking about how it might work and what all the ramifications might be. And I do have some concerns about how it might actually work in practice, but I'm very interested in exploring and working together on it. I appreciate your openness to all of us working together, also your suggestion that this might be a pilot project to start with so we could really kind of explore it, feel it out, all work together to see how this might be. And you're right, it's not uncommon for a Board to decide with, on an issue of great importance. Other municipalities have a budget analyst office that specifically helps advise the Board on a budget, and, you know, our budget is this thick, this, that might not be a bad idea. Yeah. So, but with regard to land use, I, you know, I do feel like we could use more help to find new ideas for change. Our community is calling on us to make big changes and change the direction of land use and how we've been handling development with infrastructure and planning, and this Board is clearly searching for ways to change direction in land use. And so, a new analyst position could be a part of the solution to help bring new ideas and look at our specific changes that we might make to co, in answer to our policy direction, to help us bring forth code changes, changes to our comprehensive plan in new ways, and suggest changes in the rules as well as changes in the process. And I do feel that we are having to do a lot of research and digging in our offices with our aides as we look for new ways. I think we could use some help. We could use a dedicated position. That would be one way. That would be one way to get there. I'm not sure at the end of the day that this is the best solution, but I really think it's worth exploring and that the discussion and process that we go through with the community and among ourselves will end up bringing us to a better place. So, to sum up, I had not thought of restructuring the system this way, but I am thinking about other changes and ways that we might revise the whole process, and I think everything should be considered, from the whole zoning hearing master system to the process of public participation, to reinstating the name of the department, from Development Services to Planning and Growth Management. I think our whole decades-old system is due for a fresh look, and we need to start thinking outside the box, beyond the ways we've been doing things in the past, how we might work together, and I think we should come to each other's ideas with an open mind and at least hear them out and, you know, consider moving them forward. And so, you know, I'm not promising to support whatever the final project is out of that whole, or the product is out of that whole process, but I think the exercise of exploring these ideas is very much worth going through, and I appreciate your willingness to consider something new and put it out there, and I'll certainly be supportive.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
I'll keep this short. I wasn't suggesting that we kill the Planning Commission or the MPO, but I do believe this is worth exploration. Again, I don't, you know, we have amazing staff doing amazing work, and it's huge in the terms of the opportunity to get it right and the, you know, reporting directly to the Board. Not to say that we don't already have a lot of those folks in place. We are also in a situation where we're going to have, you know, our administrative position change when you retire in June. That has, will come to bear in this conversation, I'm sure, how someone who's coming into a new system suddenly integrates with another new element that we haven't quite got figured out yet. So, I'm curious and would like to engage in the conversation. I don't know if an ordinance deadline is even settable at this point, but I'm willing to entertain the conversation. So, I'll support the motion as an exploratory process. I'm not sure I'm game on the whole idea yet, but I'm willing to hear it out, so as long as it gets it on the table.
Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I really wasn't going to get involved in this particular item, but I think Commissioner Miller's comments are on target, and they're spot-on, really. I've been here, I'm in my ninth year, or 10th year, whatever, and honestly, I mean, up until about a year ago, I have, I've sat here and listened to so many negative things about our staff, and I just feel like, you know, if we're all going to be true and honest with each other, I mean, I think there's some people on this Board that don't respect our staff, and nothing they say will change their mind. And that doesn't sit well with me. I do, I'm not going to support this today, and it's not, I mean, Commissioner White, it's not because you brought it forward or anything like that. You certainly haven't made any comments about staff, nor have you ever, you know, just respected them with any comments. But honestly, I think this is more government, and we got to add another FTE. You know where I want an FTE? I want a transportation czar. Remember? That's the first thing I asked for when I got, after I got elected. Remember that? And to help us work out these transportation issues. But gosh, you guys, I don't see how this works. You're going to have a guy or a woman come in here, and there's conflicting advice, and I just, you know, if you don't like the staff, talk to the Administrator and tell them to make a change, or wait till we get the new one and ask them to make a change. But I just think there is another way to achieve the goal of what we're trying to do rather than to get another independent body. Believe me, Hillsborough County is the only county that has a planning commission, environmental protection commission. We have, already have a lot of government going on here, and Commissioner Miller knows that because we, you know, going through the legislature, we constantly had to go through these codifications. So, I'm just, you know, it's not that I, I just don't see it working, and I've been through this in many organizations. So, I mean, I'm not disputing, I respect Commissioner White bringing it forward, but I just can't support it.
Mr. Merrill, you recognize?
I just want to thank Commissioner Murman and Miller and Overman for your comments. There's been some harsh criticism and unfair criticism levied here and not factual. We have very good staff in the Planning Commission, Lucia Garcia's department. We have, to the remark about consultants, consultants work for the Board. They don't work for me. They're selected by the Board. You have access to them anytime. I think Commissioner Kemp's unfair comment about the integrity of the work that Bonnie Wise and Tom Fessler did for you on impact fees is uncalled for. I'm going to defend them on their behalf. You had plenty of opportunity to talk to them, to ask questions you never did. I think it's unfair to call them out in public and to challenge their integrity. I can't think of two people who have more integrity and are more professional, Bonnie Wise and Tom Fessler. So, while this might not have been intended, Commissioner White, as a criticism, I think that's the way it turned out. And I think with all the work that we've done to help you with all of your initiatives and all of the creative ideas that we've brought to bear, I think this has been an unfair treatment of my staff. I'm an administrator, I can take it. They don't get a chance to defend themselves. If you don't like their advice, you don't have to take their advice. We give good advice, we're very creative. If you think you're going to hire someone and get a different answer, and you're searching for a different answer, that's not going to be the result. What's going to end up is going to be conflict between whoever you hire, the Planning Commission, it's going to send us back, we're going to be back in the dark ages again. We've got all the resources you need. If you don't like me, then deal with my people who have integrity and who are intelligent and professional. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize again, what bus you're going to drive now?
I'm just going to recognize that I was not critiquing the staff. I was contriki-
Contrikiing, go ahead.
Critiquing the experience that I've had as a Commissioner from the kinds of things that have been done, and I did not say those names and never would because I have total respect for Bonnie Wise, and I know that what comes out of our budget department, but they had direction about what to do. No one called me and told me that they were working on that even though they knew that I'd been working on that. It came out of the blue, as so much does. We also have not been, you know, I know that some Commissioners have different experiences, but I have not had those experiences where I've had the top administrator dealing with me and working through to assist me. I've felt a lack of that, so I'll just say that that's where it lies, but I do, I, you know, appreciate this because I do think we need to look right now, this is the time to look at, be able to have more options, to be able to have better advice about how we move forward, and to feel like that advice is something that's given to us independently. I just, I appreciate this suggestion, and I don't appreciate being characterized as somehow not supporting the staff because I think the staff is an awesome, wonderful staff, as I've repeatedly said, and I have all respect for Tom Fessler and Bonnie Wise, never said their names, but I do think that they're, you know, they did not create the impact fee, they were, they're under direction. And so, I just, I have issues with that going out, with nothing having ever been said to me, just comes and is put out there. So, I'll deal with that, but I, you know, over and over again, I've had this experience, and I'd like to have some other advice on how we move forward.
We have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Smith on F4. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion failed, three to three. Commissioners Miller, Murman, and Overman voted no.
Mr. Merrill.
Commissioners, that takes you to your last item, G2, which is the report card on the Department of, Departmental Service Report Cards for Library Services and Healthcare Services.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Pottshead from Management and Budget. Today, we have two departments coming up with their scorecards, Healthcare Services and Library Services.
Before you get started, Commissioner Murman wants to be recognized.
Sorry.
That's right.
It's just, Commissioner White, I wonder if you would consider having a land use expert office within administration to go forward, somebody that would specialize in land use and transportation.
Commissioner White?
Well, I don't have the Administrative Code in front of me, but I think the county administrator is limited to 10 departments, or there's some number that it's capped at.
Mr. Merrill?
So, the county has a financial advisor that is selected by the Board of County Commissioners based on our recommendation. That financial advisor reports to this Board. Any of you can call them up and ask them for their opinion. They report to you. They're ultimately accountable to you, not to me. So, if you want to have a land use advisor, select one as a consultant, just like we have a financial advisor. You get the same result, you get good advice, you get what you need.
I think that's-
That's a suggest.
Kind of what I was, where I was headed, that would be under the direction of our staff, because we have to work within the framework of what's here. I listened to the comments today. I'll tell you honestly, you guys, we're so fractured on these issues, and I do hope we can come to an agreement at some point, but I'm just going to ask Commissioner White if what, it's to give our staff the ability to bring in consultants as they feel is necessary.
Commissioner White?
I would certainly be fine with a consultant model. And where I was going with the number of departments is I would really like to see those planning and growth management functions divided out from inspections, permitting, plating, all that other stuff.
So, let me correct that. Development Services does not do planning. Development Services does inspections, they do site review, they do building inspections. There's a separate group under Lucia that does planning, and you've seen those people, and Lucia heads it up. There's no need to change the organization. The organization is fine as it is. It's separate, it gives you what you need. That would be my advice.
Look, I, we're going to be bringing in a new county administrator-
Hopefully.
-after June 30th. For right now, there's clearly not a willingness to do anything with the departmental organization. If the consultant model works, that's fine. I mean, that gets something. That gets us something.
Okay, so I'd like to ask you, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, is this okay?
Go ahead.
It's just to sit down with our Administrator, Mike Merrill, and if you guys can work out a solution, bring it back.
Happy to do it.
Is that okay?
I hope we find someone that want to service county administrator with this stuff going on. Come on, sir.
Okay. Again, Michael Pottshead, Management and Budget. We have two departments presenting the scorecards, Healthcare Services and Library Services today.
I'm Gene Early. I'm the Director and Department Director for Hillsborough County's Healthcare Services, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk about our scorecards. I wanted to thank Mr. Merrill and our executive team for their help in this, as well as communications. I also want to thank you for all the support you've done for our department. I also want to thank you for all the support you've done for our department throughout the time. This is kind of to acquaint you a little bit with our department. I think you know some of it, but Healthcare Services basically manages the Hillsborough County Healthcare Plan. It provides a safety net for the most vulnerable populations that are experiencing economic difficulties or who are unable to temporarily work, and it promotes self-sufficiency. It covers up to 138% of the poverty level. It typically is half the cost of the per member, per month rate when you compare it to Medicare or Medicaid. And it, it functions off of a half cent sales tax that doesn't use general funds and basically is a restricted fund. We also administer the Ryan White Grant Program and that covers four county areas. It's for $10 million, including Hillsborough, Pinellas, Pasco, and Hernando. We also direct the trauma agency for Hillsborough County. It's one of five trauma agencies in the state. And we do, includes a state mandated piece which deals with $20 million annual state mandated Medicare payment. And it also oversees payments for relating to the Marchman Act, Baker Act, and the Healthcare Responsibility Act for Hillsborough County, also known as HECRA. Sometimes people say, well, what is the value of the Hillsborough County Healthcare Plan? And I would tell you that we, when you look at it from a strong, sustainable local economy, we infuse $200 million into the community. We support 13 hospitals, 31 primary care and urgent healthcare clinics, 2,500 to 3,000 specialty physicians, including all ancillary and services, including prescription care. When you look at it from a, from the perspective of an enhanced public safety, we incorporate wraparound social services determinants to treat members holistically, to ensure the community and the individual's well-being and to enhance self-sufficiency. It also supports various local community partnerships and programs designed to reduce opioid addiction and overdoses, criminal recidivism, unnecessary hospital stays, and ER visits. When you look at it from a life enrichment and recreational perspective, Healthy Living Program, which we introduced with the help of you, which focuses on prevention of chronic diseases to achieve life enrichment through wellness opportunities, Hillsborough County Healthcare Plan members, the community, and our healthcare employees. For self-sufficiency, we have a program called SOAR which assists eligible individuals to apply for and receive SSI and SSDI, helping them to become self-sufficient. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. And we also serve as a high-quality community asset. Most of the time, people think of that as a structure. But we also serve as a valued asset to the community by ensuring medical care and limited dental is provided to the working poor residents in Hillsborough County. We work with you every day on healthcare from some, one place or another if you're in trouble. I thought we would just give you two success stories. One of them is a 56-year-old male who was on the Hillsborough County Plan. In May of 2019, this gentleman was informed by his employer that his position would be eliminated due to reduction in force. He had previously had a kidney transplant 37 years ago and he was hospitalized for kidney failure in July 2019, which happened to coincide with the time he lost his employment. We were able to complete his application in six days and he was approved for Social Security disability in November. The second one that I'll tell you about is basically happened in 2017. It was a 35-year-old female. While on her way to visit her relatives, she was involved in a major car accident that left her legs, hip, head severely injured, and she underwent 16 surgeries. She lost her job, her apartment, her car. She ended up staying on a relative's couch. When the SOAR case manager met with her, she was ready to give up and was battling major depression and severe anxiety. She received, as a result of that, back pay for $15,888, a monthly SSDI benefit of $1,026. And with those benefits she received, she was able to modify a room in her relative's house, buy all the necessary medical equipment and supplies, and basically receive home nursing assistance and the physical therapy she needs. She's doing well today. So that kind of shows you just how important it is to our community and how we get people back to self-sufficiency. And one of the things I wanted to also mention is we have key sustainability and performance metrics that we monitor all the time. So we've served over 20,000 unduplicated members a year. We do 448 per member per month, and as I mentioned, that's half. We have 90% annual membership satisfaction. Most of our people are only on there for 3.3 years and then they move on. You've seen the hospitals and the federally qualified health centers and all of the people that we support, including our specialty physicians and our behavioral health. And just to tell you, this is now our 26th year. 260,000 Hillsborough County residents have been served over the last 10 years. 60,000 unduplicated members. Processed almost a half a million enrollments. Have provided over $1 billion in healthcare services and we've answered almost 800,000 calls. So the SOAR program maintains, and I told you I would come back to this, is 86% approval rate. We generally process them at an approval rate in about 68 days. And it goes in the, in the community, it takes two years in the state of Florida. So we have a really great program in this regard and it's working with our homeless groups and all of our other groups. Our medical management contractor that we work with currently has been reviewing for us for a number of years the nine trended evidence-based measures for the calendar years. And basically, over the last four years, we've done better than Medicaid for those measures. The records in recovery unit, which you don't normally think of, that basically, we just did $7.3 million in recovery from Medicaid. And then what we do with that is we basically take, we say, okay, somebody gets put on Medicaid from our SOAR program and then they give us back all the money back to the date they were eligible in Medicaid, which means they get $7.3 million back to our trust fund. So that's what happens every time. And I just finally want to just mention our Healthy Living Program, which I'm very proud of. And we basically have also done some opioid stuff, thanks to Commissioner Merman and our Behavioral Health Task Force. We did $13 million to fight the opioid crisis. We put 42 more intermediary beds for mental health, which allows them to do 60 to 120 days. When they're Baker acted, they usually get out in three. And if you want someplace to put them, those are the beds that we're going to put them in. I mentioned that we expanded to 138%, but remember you also rescinded the felony requirement. And as a result of that, you basically have achieved more people getting behavioral health as well as educational things, and we are continuing to work that way. The Healthy Living Program, we partner with a number of people. And one of the things I want to mention is since we've put that program in place at the three community resource centers, we now have 1,500 people enrolled. We fed 2,208 households and we did 60,000 pounds of food. And you have been at some of our events that we hold monthly and we really do appreciate your support when you come out. And so I just want to say in conclusion, and I have to speak for my staff for just a moment, this is not something that I do by myself. I have wonderful managers, we have wonderful staff. They all work very hard to make sure that our clients are treated appropriately and we do the things that we need to do to make sure that they get their healthcare. I want to thank our nurses, our managers, and all my staff for that. And I just want to thank Mike Merrill and his Carl Harness and others, and especially Commissioner Merman and you for having supported us all through this time. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Early. You've done a fantastic job with this healthcare plan we have. I never will forget, I think it was probably my first or second year, maybe it was third year, in the House, I had a gentleman that called me and he was in dire need of a pacemaker. In fact, he was in deep trouble. And I had my staff call the county and he immediately was hospitalized and received a pacemaker. I don't know if he's still alive or not, but every couple of years they would call him back and replace that pacemaker because he just couldn't afford it any longer. So that's how far this goes back and all the work that this, this county's been doing with this program. So thank you so very, very much. Before you leave, however, some Commissioners want to say something. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Dr. Early, you continue, you and your entire team continue to impress. We are blessed by having the work that you and your staff do. I too have had the opportunity to put out a healthcare fire for someone and the SOAR program is brilliant. You know, a lot of people don't realize that when you have kidney failure or you need a transplant, you're automatically on Social Security disability, but nobody ever tells them that. So the opportunity that where they, you know, the county can get involved in helping people connect to not only what they're due, but to help them do what they can do to take care of themselves in a healthy way is, is so powerful. And partnering with, you know, the Cooperative Extension and work that Monica's doing on Healthy Foods and, and Feeding Tampa Bay to help people recognize how they can take control of their own health, that preventative action you may not find through Medicaid and Medicare in a way that Hillsborough can really win at helping build a healthy community. And you set the bar high. If the rest of the state or the country actually followed your model, we would mean a much healthier country. And I just can't thank you enough for the work that you do. Thank you.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
I can't let you go. You've been an outstanding leader. We're very fortunate here in Hillsborough. So you all know that there's only six counties that have, I believe, healthcare services available to their residents because they have the indigenous healthcare tax. And we are just so fortunate. I mean, you can't imagine. Our resident, I mean, we're saving taxpayer dollars because they're not ending up in emergency rooms. We have case management for them. And they're just, you know, they're getting the kind of care they should get, even though they can't get it themselves because they're low income. So I really, it's outstanding. Phyllis Buscinski really had a great vision for this and I can't say enough about the work the whole team does because since I've been here, we've done mental health, substance abuse, opioids. I mean, we've just done a whole lot. And I know there's more that's coming down the pike. So thank you for everything.
Mr. Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I'd just like to say again, thank you for everything. And of course, I'm, Hillsborough County has so much to be proud of with our healthcare program. And I always think of Phyllis and back to those days. And so I appreciate that mention again. But from the start, it's been one that's been recognized actually across the nation. And we have helped so many people in so many ways. So thank you for your direction and work on it.
Early, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would have called you by your middle name, but I forgot what it was. What is it? Somebody told us.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to come here and talk about the importance of libraries and their value in the community. While Gene and his amazing staff are spending their time saving lives in our community, the library's amazing staff is spending their time helping transform them. And, when do you go to the? Our libraries are places that are user-centered spaces where our customers have access to a wide variety of print, digital, audiovisual materials. It's a primary support for the education in the community, for lifelong learning and for school readiness. And the library is a showroom for new technologies. Of all of the important social capital that county government creates in the community, libraries, among all places, are one of the few that are accessible by everyone without qualifications, without permits, without access, without fees. We are working hard to create equitable access to information, to education and technology resources that help people make sense of their daily lives. Just let me do a try. Perfect. A lot of people, when they think of libraries, think about books. And while that is still our primary business, the library's more than just books. Wanted to highlight a few things that we do offer for the community that enhances living here in Hillsborough County. We circulate museum passes so people can check out and experience. We lend laptops within the buildings to extend the availability of technology. Wi-Fi hotspots in the community. We have areas of our community that are challenged with high-speed internet access and this helps level that playing field. We offer people to borrow educational tablets for children of all ages with educational software, science models so they can help do their projects and learn. We have a mobile initiative that gets this educational program out to the customers. We offer enhanced Storytime books for kids with learning disabilities and starting in a month, GoPro cameras so that people can create the content that so populates our lives. Little bit of our value in the community. The state of Florida Department of Library Services has, does an economic return on investment study every year and has concluded that for every dollar spent on library services in the community, there's a return of $10.81 in economic benefit. We have also had a recent study given to us by Chemley-Horn showing that there's a 2.2 to 5% incremental increase in ad valorem tax on properties within a third of a mile of a library and that local retail benefits about, by about $5.43 annually for every library visit. That's $20 million in 2019 of benefit to library visitors on local retail nearby. We also help enhance public safety. One of the new programs that we've been offering is a social zone after-school program in all of our libraries where we offer a safe, bully-free place for young people to learn and to gather and to do their homework. And just over 46,000 kids took advantage of that in 2019, teens and pre-teens, which was a 102% increase over the previous year. The libraries are a life enrichment and recreational opportunity. That is our primary, primary business. Over almost 8 million people visited libraries last year in person and online, borrowing nearly 12 million items, all different formats. 74% of Hillsborough County households have at least one active library card. And that is a lot in thanks to our partnership with the school system. And just over 400,000 people attended nearly 15,000 educational and cultural programs held in libraries last year. We also do contribute and help make families and individuals self-sufficient. One of the things we're very proud of is helping new Americans integrate into our community. And we provide that through the Hillsborough Literacy Council with over 4,400 hours of ESOL training to over 213 adults last year. We've provided 2,100 technology and career education programs to citizens and provided over 700,000 computer sessions, 3.8 million wireless computer sessions to our, to our customers. And as you know, the libraries themselves are a place in the community and are high-quality community assets. The facilities are a center for civic engagement. They are a place where people gather and engage each other. Over 400,000 of our citizens attended a community meeting at our libraries, many to, to visit with you. We also help our customers understand the value that they directly get economically by using the library. The library's website has a value calculator that's built into it so customers can visit this. They can enter the amount of the services and the types of services that they've used and see exactly what the value of that was that they participated in with a convenient link right to the property tax database so they can see the line item on how much they actually paid for library services to the taxing district and see the value that they've gotten for what they've paid. Additionally, every time someone checks out material from the library, the receipt comes with a statement on it. That's, that's how much they save today just by using the library. And it'll keep a running tally for them for the calendar year so they can show you how much they've saved through the calendar year by using the library as opposed to other purchasing so they can spend that money elsewhere in the community. We have so many positive stories about the library to share. We collect those and have- We collect those and have self-submission on the library's website, hcpLC.org, where customers can contribute, and everyone can go and view those success stories. But I did want to share just one today. I want to focus on Maddie. Maddie's been a visitor for a long time to our Ruskin Branch Library and has been working on her lifelong dream to work with children. The staff there helped her with computer and educational instruction, to use the computer and the internet, helped her navigate the childcare licensing process for Hillsborough County, and as she said, something that a service that I wasn't even aware, we offered, they've been counseling her on patience, and she's gotten through the process, she's successfully licensed, and is now working with children, and very happy at doing that. When you read through these success stories, it's very clear that one thing is very important about libraries, is that having strong libraries really does mean having a strong community for all of its residents. We do measure things, and we use that information a lot to make our decisions, and I know I threw a lot of numbers at you already, so let's help put some of those in context. One of the things that we like to look at, since circulation of materials is our number-one business, is how much does that cost for us to do that? And this is something that libraries do across the country. However, ours is done a little differently. We actually include in that cost per use all of the metrics, including the delivery, the technology, and the staff time, and so for every item that we lend, it takes, it's about 91 cents. That is actually lower than the national average, and we're including more than just a division of how much we spent versus how much it went out. Of all the things that we circulate, one thing I really want to highlight that we are extremely proud of is that we have, this year, crossed the threshold so that 51 percent of all the materials that we lend to the public are digital. That helps us operate more efficiently, and we put a breakdown there, a pie chart, and you'll see between the green sections, that's the digital, and it kind of gives you a perspective on all the things people are doing. We are the only large library system in America who has crossed that threshold, and we are the 21st largest library system in America. The other thing we do that we like to measure is our classes and events, because we do hold a lot of educational opportunities. The average cost for all of those educational opportunities is just about, just above nine bucks, and when you try to sign up for a non-credit educational class on the open market in Hillsborough County, it can be anywhere from 25 to $50. So that is quite a savings. To let you see a little bit about how we fit and the efficiency of that, I put some library per capita spending there for you, showing that we spend about $29 per capita on library services in Hillsborough County, which is slightly above the state average and slightly below the national average based on our costs, making us a really efficient, effective deal for our customers. And as you can see, customers really do like it. Those are our effectiveness ratings there from customers on whether our staff was helpful and they learned something, or made our resources, put our resources to good use. Now, a little shameless self-promotion. I have to thank the strong support of this board and the leadership of Mike Merrill, Greg Horwiddell, and Tom Fass, and the hard work of all of the library staff for helping achieve this. 2019, the Florida Library Association did name Hillsborough County Libraries Library of the Year. It's an honor. It's the first time in the 15 years this award has been given that our libraries have been awarded. And some of the programs that they recognized, I put across the bottom there, things like eliminating late fines for equitable access, working with the schools to develop a program so that all kids have, their lunch number is their library card, doing passport acceptance, working with our local author community, because they are, after all, entrepreneurs, and the creative spaces that we've developed called the Hive. Some of these kinds of programs, as well as the reorganization of our staff, our website, and our partnerships with the community, have been what drove this award. And for that, I don't want to say thank you to all of you as well for your strong support. And now, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to entertain them.
Thank you, sir. Excellent presentation. Thank you. Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
I sound like I'm gushing again after the last gush, but I will suggest to you that we are so blessed by having the library system that we have. I actually live across the street from the, I think, the busiest library in the county when it comes to, and it's relatively new. I was in the old one, and we definitely needed a new one. And it's beautiful. It's highly used. I think it's probably the best-used meeting space facility in the county, to tell you the truth. But the resources and the innovation that you've taken to help facilitate not only access to information and learning and tools and fun and all the above is stellar. You spend the money well, you actually provide access to it well, and when I watch the middle school and the high school students literally fill the building after school and see what a safe haven it is, it helps me recognize the true meaning of a community resource. You know, a lot of our communities don't have a community recreation center. You know, we have them, but they're not, you know, every other corner, and the libraries have actually served that for so many of our citizens, and for that, I'm truly grateful. I actually see, I can see the wireless because I'm that close, and know how important it is for people to have access to that when they can't afford it on their own. I think the internet services at that library is, you know, as long as you're open, it's there, and the hours that you're available to our citizens are so, not only appreciated, but so valuable to the community. Thank you for the work that you do. Keep doing the great stuff, and we are very, very fortunate when we have an opportunity to add another library to our community. So, looking at those responsible resources and how we build the bank of libraries for our growing communities is going to be an important thing that we think about in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize.
Thank you. I love our libraries. Have my whole life, I love the breadth of services that are just amazing, and also the, you know, the forward-thinking adoption of all kinds of technology. I was, you know, I think, I use the internet to get into the whole library catalog, and then you can reserve something and have it put on hold and brought whenever it becomes available and brought to your own branch to pick up, and that's always been so marvelous. I was using that before, I was an early adopter of modem technology, and so was our library. And so, in the days when the modems was not even AOL or any of the internet services, but type crawling up the screen, I was able to call into our libraries and reserve. And as you say, the public Wi-Fi, the digital audiobooks, the ability to rent audiobooks is really helpful for people with a long commute, like myself, to have in the car, on our phones these days. And I was unaware that you now run out or offer GoPro cameras.
Coming soon.
Okay, coming soon. And I know you used to have a program of also sharing art and music. Is that still available?
We still have an active music program and do circulate CDs. The art, sharing art program stopped quite a while ago.
Yes, right. But the facilities as centers for civic engagement are really important. I've been in, I know most of us have now been in meetings in libraries around the county, from the big ones to the little ones. One of the first things I checked out in my, when I moved to Ruskin, was the Ruskin Branch, and they have a lovely little meeting room with a view to Marsh Creek. It's an important part of the Ruskin community, as is the bigger South Shore Library with meeting facilities and classes, but also, you know, a hub where you know you can get tax forms and tax information and voter registration information. All those tools of civic engagement are so important to our civic life and citizens. And I just want to wrap up by saying, every library I go in all around the county, from New Tampa to Ruskin, is always clean and inviting, and the staff is always helpful with directions and information, well-run for decades since the days of the modems and the public art program to now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Keppe, you recognize.
Thank you. We all love our healthcare and our libraries, and have certainly kept ahead of the times. I think our libraries have, and I don't know, it's maybe everywhere in the country, but I'm really proud of the fact that, you know, we, even though I've always found refuge in libraries and in books, that we moved from that to much more multimedia, online, civic engagement, having the rooms open and available even when the library isn't open. I mean, I just think it's just amazing how forward the libraries have been in their thinking and their access to the community, in just things like not charging late fines any longer, and being places that everyone can feel at home and comfortable and wonderful. My only hope is that in future years, because we have such wonderful libraries, that we're able to start to open them for longer hours, because I'd really like to see the hours extended for many of them, so, but it's wonderful, and I love the direction that the libraries are going in and are in.
Great, thank you.
Well, if you all want to see a very modern library, I live two blocks from the C. Black Andrews Library. Just opened, what, about a year ago?
Just under a year. It is our most modern and our most beautiful library yet.
You need to come see it. It is absolutely gorgeous. I had the fortunate opportunity of being there the day that we opened it. The library even improved one of the roads around it. It did, so, that's a beautiful library. If you all really want to see one and what they're doing in libraries these days, come see the C. Black Andrews Library.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
On behalf of all the staff, thank you so much for your support.
Mr. Merrill.
That concludes the regular items on the agenda. It just leaves future discussion.
Before we get to future discussions, we need to go back to public comment. We still have quite a few people registered to sign to speak. I don't know if they're still here. I know David Mechanic is probably gone. Amanda Bush. Amanda Bush. Logan Crosskey, Amanda Bush is here? I'm sorry, someone's there.
No, I'm Logan Crosskey. Did you want to?
Okay, well, Amanda Bush was first.
Amanda? Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought you said before me, so I thought you were first. Sorry. Okay. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Amanda.
Before you start, everyone's still speaking, you have three minutes.
Yes.
The timers are there in front of you, and the yellow light comes on, I mean, you have 30 seconds to start. Back up to three minutes. I interrupted her.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Amanda Bush. I live in Hillsborough County, and I very happily live in Commissioner White's district. This is not the first time I have spoken to this commission about my family's business All About Puppies, and it will probably not be the last, given today's events, but this is the first time I have come here feeling disappointment towards the legislative process. When my family, our staff, and our friends, and our customers came and spoke to you all back in 2017, some of you were not here at the time, and I understand that. Congratulations on your wins, by the way. We spoke at these meetings as a means to not only try and keep our family business from becoming the prey of misguided and misused information, but also to educate not just the commissioners, but also the citizens of Hillsborough County on the importance of understanding the other side of the story, our story, that so frequently gets misrepresented by people who have never stepped foot in our stores or even cared to reach out to us to try and better understand the intricacies of the business that we have established in this area for two and a half decades. And wow, did that misrepresentation happen a lot today. We have lived up to our end of the agreement in every way it is outlined in our ordinance, so you can imagine my frustration and disbelief as I sat here today and witnessed the current ordinance being gutted, which will, without a doubt, put my family's business out of business as soon as the ink dries. I am sickened by the fact that recent headlines about a local breeder that was shut down could ever even remotely be used as a catalyst to justifying taking my family's business away from us. I know there are people that continue to say, why can't they just go to an adoption-based model? Petco and Petsmart do it, they can too. This may, to me, this is the same as saying, why can't all the commissioners just be Republicans? Some of them are, so why can't, you're all politicians? Why not all just be the same? It doesn't sound very American to me, and it doesn't, and to make us change our business to what a select group of people believe is better suited to what their beliefs are does not sound very American to me either. Hillsborough County's ordinance is strong, it is fair, and it is currently operating as it was intended. All I can additionally ask is that if you have questions about our business, please reach out to us and ask us your questions directly. Please do not rely on information from activist groups whose agenda is to see our business fade away as your only source for factual information about us, just as I would not ask your political opponent about the factual information about you, as I am sure their truth and your truth would be very different. Thank you.
Thank you. Logan Crosskey, Mr. Crosskey.
Good afternoon, commissioners and chairman. My name is Logan Crosskey, and I live here in Hillsborough County. I moved to Tampa in August of 2017 with nothing besides my car. Since then, I have found a new home here at Puppy Stampa while receiving my education. I'm a full-time student here, as well as a full-time employee. I've been with the company for about a year and a half now, and I've committed myself to an apartment, a car payment, and a full-time school schedule. Closing our business and taking away our jobs will force many of us with a full-time employee students to default on our loans and be unable to pay for our schools and our housing. Agenda item B4 is a bad recommendation and should be rejected as it stands. It needs to be rewritten and stripped of all of its extremist-inspired language and called for banning businesses. If we must make an amendment today by directing the county's attorney office to add some more language pertaining to the enforcement, then let's do it. Frankly, I do not think this belongs in these chambers, and I think this is a state-level issue. We can take our arguments to a state level, but not here every 18 months when an excuse pops up to bring all the pet stores to face demise. No other industry in my aware of proposes banning businesses that have a complete compliance record and have shown the willing to work with regulations. Your ordinance is working, leave it alone. Closing legitimate businesses will only make very tiny subgroup activists very happy while forcing the residents of the county to go to the internet and purchase their puppies with zero regulation and limited consumer recourse. Said another way, this is how we overreach with legislation and actually end up with less realized regulation, once everything is pushed underground through prohibition. This is how we end up with 70 different ways to sell a puppy in the state. And lastly, this is exactly how the state in the business of writing preemptive laws, starting with pet stores, going from there. Thank you.
Alexandria Julian.
That one first. Okay, hello, my name is Alexandria Julian, and I am one of the three generations of women that operate the All About Puppies stores, own and operate the All About Puppies stores. In 2016, I visited the breeders that my family works with. Back then, I had no idea that I would end up here today, but shortly after that visit, I realized a distorted image that was being portrayed on a group of genuinely good people. They didn't deserve this label that was being forced on them, so over the past years, I've attended many of these meetings with one purpose, and that is to give representation to responsible breeders like ours that provide puppies to pet stores. To me, these aren't nameless or faceless people that are being slandered here, and they shouldn't be to you either. So, what she's showing right now are the breeders that we work with. As you see, these aren't just responsible dog breeders, these are mothers, fathers, foster parents, church bus drivers, and my favorite, animal advocates. They aren't part of the problem, they are part of the solution. During my most recent visit, as recently as four months ago, what you're being shown right now is my visit with Judy Rainey, the breeder that was drastically and grossly misrepresented by a seven-year-old inspection report. I'd like to bring to you, you up to present day, this is Judy Rainey, and this is her kennel currently. This breeder, Judy, she is a loving pet owner, her dogs have names, she teaches... Judy, she is a loving pet owner. Her dogs have names. She teaches them tricks. She gives them Milk Bones before bed. She lays with them through the night while they have their puppies in this room that she's actually designed specifically to cater to female dogs that are in labor. Now that that is cleared up, I'd like you to know that some of these dogs in these breeding programs I've actually raised myself. There is not a better home in the world for those animals than exactly where they are right now. They have socialization programs, retirement programs, and they actually have a better healthcare system than I do. These breeders keep their dogs safe. They prioritize their mental and their physical health. But above all else, it's very simple, but I feel like it's worth mentioning, some of these dogs are the happiest dogs I've ever met in my life. And given my background, you know that I've met plenty. Our breeders are proud of what they do, as they should be. I'm very happy that I have the relationship that I do with them, so I'm able to provide representation for them, especially under the circumstances. I do this in hopes that one day they get the positive recognition that they deserve. And if any of you for a single second are concerned about the care and conditions of my dogs that are owned by my breeders, I can assure you that you do not need to give that a second thought. To add on to that, the USDA pictures that you saw up here, those are from 2013. Also, note that if an office inspector has taken a photo, it's because there is a violation present. So people saying that that is a representation of a USDA-licensed breeder, that is not accurate. Those are USDA-licensed breeders that would not be in compliance. So there is an issue with that photo. There's also state regulation that far supersedes the USDA. We should look into that as well. Thank you.
Gerard Putter. Gerard?
Good morning, Commissioners and Mr. Chairman. My name is Jared Putter. Agenda item B4, if you haven't had a chance to review it, which we've all seen today, is another proposed ban of pet stores. Agenda item B4 uses the argument that Alice Holt was a pet store, which she wasn't, and so to prevent another Alice Holt, we must ban all the pet stores? The proposal lumps in compliant businesses that do things the right way with the person that was abusing her dogs for 20 years. It paints everybody with the same background, which we don't. Section 1 of the recommendation takes away our grandfather privileges in two years' time. So it closes us in two years, but actually, it's actually just going to close us as soon as it goes through. Section 2 of the proposal immediately terminates our ability to purchase any inventory and calls for activist groups to become our new overseer for the interim period. So it closes us immediately and for some reason, again, in two years. So the proposal literally says, we are closing your doors in two years, but also immediately closing your doors now because you can't buy any inventory. And oh, by the way, we're letting the people that exempt themselves from everything and come up with these bans be your new overseers. Additionally, the agenda item uses the argument that 70 different ordinances in place in the state. Seventy? I mean, really, what, why do we need 70 different ways to sell a Shih Tzu in Florida? We really should have something on a consistent basis level. That is not a valid reason to pass an ordinance on top of an existing one that is currently working. That is, however, a valid reason why the state of Florida is looking to preempt the counties from regulating these retail pet sales. It's gotten out of control, and now they are looking to step in and unifying the process of sales and regulation. Frankly, this is a state-level issue and does not belong in this chamber. Why are we using county funds for this? Instead of allocating funds to improve the lifestyle of Tampa, why are we here taking people's future pets away? This should not be a county concern, especially with the full agenda that Hillsborough County does currently have and is unable to finish with things like this taking precedent. This job is what pays for my food, my rent, my car payment. Shutting us out will take my job and really mess up other people's lives as well. We have many people that have just gotten cars. I have two coworkers now that have just bought houses within the last month. It's just not cool. So what are we going to do? No puppies, then? Prohibition? How has that worked? That's not going to work. It didn't work with alcohol, hasn't worked with marijuana, as we're seeing now, and so it really is not going to work with puppies, which are something people like better than alcohol and marijuana. But let's get us one thing straight. Not everybody wants a dog from the shelter. It's not an awful thing to say. You can't always find the breed you're looking for, the size you're looking for, if you want a non-shedding breed. It really, you can't get what you want. This is a ridiculous waste of time and money. And quite frankly, I want my commissioners worrying about things that will benefit our community and not taking the joy out of it. Thank you, guys.
Ashley Chandler? And if Alexa Julian is here, you're next.
Good afternoon, guys. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ashley Chandler, and I'm currently employed at Tampa Puppy's Tampa. I've been there for a short period of time, but in that short period of time that I've been there, I can truly say I've never seen such care and loving attention for dogs in my entire life. And I've been a pet owner off and on my entire life. Having this job is one of the ways that I care for my son, and I solely care for my son. I'm the only one that is able to provide for him. My son's biological father walked out when he was about a month old. So without this job, I would not be able to give my son the things that he needs: diapers, wipes, you know, et cetera. And I look at these puppies just like they're my own kid. You know, we go in, we spend time with them, we feed them, we take the care and need that they genuinely need throughout a day, just like a child. You know, with taking our jobs away, you're not only taking away our time and money that we, what we work for every day, but also the attention that those dogs need. You know, you're telling us that we're running puppy mills, but in the long run, what you're doing is literally allowing people who have no idea what to do with dogs at all to turn around and do exactly that with no rules or regulations at all. As long as we're sitting here as puppy stores with rules and police, then there's nothing that someone could go out and sell a dog on Facebook that could have been abused or beaten or any of those pictures that we've seen. You know, there's nothing that states that the people that are selling dogs on Facebook or social media or any other way that they're doing it, that they're doing things any differently than we are, besides the fact that we have rules and we get checked up on and we have things that we have to follow, that we abide by. You know, let's see, what else? And speaking of people that do things not so nicely, not only do we follow the rules and regulations that we have to make sure that the puppies are well taken care of, but we also look at people who want to do not-so-nice things with dogs, as in turn them into puppy mills and make them breed an enormous amount of dogs that isn't needed. But we also look at people who are looking for dogs for dogfighting. You know, that's a big issue with society these days, is people trying to adopt dogs specifically to put them in harm's way. You know, us as people, we need to look at, there's other things that need to be resolved, just as my coworker Jared said. There's more important things than trying to take away people's dogs. You know, shelter dogs are not always necessarily the best option. Yes, there are a bunch of them there, but we, as people, can only control so much. And I truly believe that the county commissioners should be looking at other more important things rather than taking away not only our means of living, but of these dogs' life as well. Because it's not just affecting us. It's affecting the dogs more than anything. That's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Alexa Julian? And if Yoshiko Ozawa is here, you follow Alexa?
Hello, County Commissioners. My name is Alexa Julian. Oh, thank you, thank you. I live at 2124 West Brandon Boulevard. My family owns and operates the All About Puppy Stores in Hillsborough and Pinellas County. We have been in this business for a very long time, almost 25 years to be exact. I'm just getting started in helping to support my father's legacy and what he wanted to bring forth to the citizens of Florida by creating these stores. And I would love to see that through and give it my all, as all of our other members of our team have been striving to do. It's overwhelming, to say the least, that we would be viewed by anyone as the problem when we are part of the solution. My father built this business on a dream that everyone should know the unconditional love of a dog and for dogs to know the unconditional love of a human being. That was how he came to an idea where people come into, where people could come into an environment where they cannot only look at dogs, but have the chance to play and interact with them, get to know their personality, develop a genuine connection, and build memories that both humans and dogs alike could remember forever. And that is what he stood for and what we want to continue to pursue now and for the future. It is both a privilege and a blessing to take part in this journey, knowing that it was my own flesh and blood who started it and gave everything he had every day to the day he died so he could bring joy and happiness to both, people and dogs. We work day and night to fulfill the one outstanding duty we have been given, and that is to take care of our animals and give them good homes to people we know will take care of them and give them the love and attention they so deserve. We treat every dog we have in our stores like our own, and that has never faltered despite what some people like to think and believe, but that is not the case with us. I'm not saying that all breeders and shops around the world are perfect. There is good and bad in every industry, but I can assure our opposition and all of you that we and the breeders we work with are not part of the problem. It's something I will always look up to, no matter what happens in the future. I will always be proud of what my father created and the impact he has had on so many countless families in our community and what all he had accomplished in such a short life. I know some of you may have your minds made up. Some of you may have preconceived notions, and if that is so, then although it is a shame, I can't stop you from moving forward. And for those of you who are still on the fence, I would like to ask you, please, give these animals and constituents a real solution instead of generating an uncontrollable market like this proposal will create. Thank you.
Yoshiko Ozawa, followed by John Young?
I am very surprised that we are here again after just two short years. My name is Yoshiko Ozawa, and I am the manager at Puppy's Tampa. I've spent 12 years of my life at pet stores, and I have spent over a decade at Puppy's Tampa. Our store abides by all county regulations. During those 10 years, I have had many personal challenges in my life: family members passing away, health issues, including being diagnosed with breast cancer last year, and then becoming a survivor. But one thing that has not ever been challenged and has been a staple in my life is the career that I have at Puppy's Tampa. My boss has always told me that I have 100% job security, for I hold my position with extreme pride, and I take my job very seriously. Even when our store has followed every single guideline, I find myself standing here, fighting for our right to stay in business. Yes, there was a hobby, a hobby breeder who did not follow protocol in Hillsborough County. This person had absolutely no relationship to our store or any other stores in Hillsborough County. It is unfortunate that because of someone else's actions, we have to be here again. On Wednesday, October 2, 2019, Puppy's Tampa donated the funds to supply all the items that were needed at the Pet Resource Center. Puppy's Tampa is happy to have given the charitable donation to the Pet Resource Center. They will put the proceeds to good use for that facility. Puppy's Tampa is here to support the Hillsborough County community in any way that we are able. If you would like to tweak the regulations with another amendment, that is fine, but don't shut down my store. We have done nothing wrong. I want you to consider the employees of the store that you are affecting, not just myself, but for the young, single woman who drives an hour to and from work in order to feed her son, the young college kids who signed a 12-month lease on their apartment now they do not know how they're going to pay month to month. Please do not take away their livelihood. Please. 179 days, 179 days is a number. But you know what? It's also scrambling to figure out to keep the roofs over our head to provide for our family. If you want to fight for something, fight to strengthen USDA regulations. That is what this is really about. Puppy's Tampa has zero violations in 10 years, zero. Hillsborough County, we're all Hillsborough County citizens. Lastly, please keep us part of Hillsborough County. I wouldn't be part of the store if I didn't find it as a wonderful place. Thank you.
John Young, followed by Cindy Baker?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. I'm a proud employee at Puppy's Tampa, and agenda item B4 puts all of us out of business. Hillsborough County, to my knowledge, is not favored for putting people out of business, but this recommendation is immediately going to put us out, and this would be the second time in two years. This is a very aggressive agenda item, and of course, exerts rescue companies entirely. So who really wrote this? Said another way, how do we go from comments about the PRC and about enforcement and penalty section concerns to we're going to recommend the commissioners to put people out of business multiple times, just make sure they're dead? You see, if you read this item, it's actually so over the top. The real intention of banning everybody that is not a rescue company is transparent. This just brings us to prohibition, something that's never worked in the United States. With prohibition, you blow out the supply of an item, but leave the demand in place, increase it actually. You pervert the price discovery mechanism in the store markets. This widens out in break evens of new entrants, and now you get paid more to take the risk. So here comes a new group of market entrants to fill that void. So let's take a proposal about what happened with California and banning the sale of puppies. Now we have a geographic wall of internet companies shipping puppies into the state while not having to follow any of their regulations. We also have a new industry that has popped up newly to registered rescues, but these rescues all seem to be purebred French Bulldogs because they're all bolted onto kennels that stand six feet from the rescue kennel. Now these rescue groups can source loads of the puppies to sell at a pet store in California. And by the way, this new underground industry is growing now and will not be stopped anytime soon. Distort markets, and this is what you get. Prohibition is not the answer. You have an ordinance that works, your pet stores are in compliance and will remain so. And we take every measure, we take every precaution, and we honestly care about the puppies. That's why we go to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John Young?
Cindy Baker? Cindy Baker? Victoria Sabo? Victoria Sabo? Natalia Santa Brea? Followed by Daniela Coffey?
Good afternoon. My name is Natalia Santa Brea. I reside in Tampa, Florida. I am employed by All About Puppies but stand here today as an animal advocate. Since the passing of the pet retail sales ordinance in 2017, I have advocated across the state in efforts to prevent this industry from being monopolized by the underground pet market. It's been my experience that the local officials throughout Florida are after the same goal, and these bans, they just don't adversely affect the lives of business owners. They also affect the constituents who have kept us in business for 25 years and all the animals that everyone claims to care so much about. If it were about the animals, we wouldn't be giving this recommendation a second thought, and let me explain why. Right now, Hillsborough County has on the books an ordinance that proves, provides transparency to consumers, develops a working relationship between PRC and retailers, and gives breeders that provide puppies to pet stores even more of an incentive to go above and beyond. This ordinance promotes responsible licensed breeders and takes a stand against the substandard. Our ordinance has been used as a template for communities across the state due to the fact that banning local businesses has not proven to be an effective method for doing away with the substandard pet dealers, like historical prohibition has taught us. I know we keep repeating it, but instead, what we're seeing is an influx in unregulated, unmonitored, uncontrollable suppliers fighting to meet this demand, ranging from illegal pet importation and pet laundering schemes from organizations with nonprofit status buying and selling animals from the very breeders they wish to demolish. These bans have resulted in an increase of animals getting caught up in this pet trafficking arrangement. The packet we provided to you earlier in this week contains years of research proving that this type of prohibition will negatively impact the animals, and that is 100% fact it will hurt the animals. Hillsborough County has developed an ordinance that supseeds any other ordinance in our state. Why would we take a step backwards and repeat the mistake that 68 municipalities have already made? However, if we move forward with this proposal and ban the retail sale of dogs and cats, let's not for a second pretend that it's for the best of the animals' interests. We know better than that, and let's not create abuse that we are trying to prevent. In closing, I know there are people on this commission that do support our initiative and share the same stance on this topic as we do. Please stand up for what is right. Let's continue making difference in Hillsborough County and being the model community for municipalities that are intending to join this fight as well. Let's continue spearheading this effort to benefit the animals in our community, not just appease the animal rights groups' agendas. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniela Coffey, followed by Crystal Gutierrez?
Hello, County Commissioners. My name is Daniela Coffey. I reside in Hillsborough County. I'm here today because an outright ban would be leaving consumers with only one option, to obtain their future pet from an unregulated source. All the photos on the projector are proof rescue organizations are buying dogs from the very breeders they're trying to abolish. Rescues, shelters, and hobby breeders are not regulated by federal or state legislation. According to the Washington Post, rescue groups have spent $2.68 million in donations buying dogs and puppies for auction. This practice is referred to by commercial breeders as a huge underground market. There is a whole new monopoly within the rescue industry. Some breeders are now breeding animals specifically for rescue groups to purchase at auction due to fact that rescues are purchasing them due to fact that rescues are purchasing them at higher rates than any sensible person would. In one instance, a single rescue using donation money purchased two Cavalier King Charles spaniels for $10,000 each. Breeders are now making an enormous profit off any animal they auction because rescue groups are battling for the highest bid against other rescue groups looking to cash in on a purebred animal. It's not good enough that the dog is being rescued either way. It has to be by their group so they can reap the benefits and donations. Where rescue's original purpose in the industry was to aid local pet shelters overflow, due to lack of oversight, it has now morphed, in some cases, into an unregulated retail outlet. These retail rescues can pop up as quickly as a 501(c)(3) application allows. No pre-inspection, no licensing required, and no oversight, but yet these ordinances do not address entities existing under these terms. Consumers should have the option to choose where they obtain their pet from. One of these options, at least one of these options, should be a regulated retail outlet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Crystal Gutierrez, followed by Judith Seltreitch. I pronounced that wrong.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Hello, county commissioners. My name is Crystal Gutierrez. My address is 13705 North Dale Mabry. I've been employed with All About Puppies since 2017, and I'd like to discuss today how our stores operate and the obligation we have as pet retail, as a, sorry, as a pet retail establishment in Florida. Currently, places citizens can get domestic pets from include shelters, rescues, online sources, pet stores, et cetera. Rescue shelters, online, and home breeders are not regulated by any state, federal, or federal legislation. The most consumer and animal protection in place to date is for pets obtained from pet stores. Rather than deterring small business owners from enriching your city, you can continue to set a standard that does not eliminate consumer choice but protects it. We abide by Florida Statute 828.29, as well as the Hillsborough County ordinance currently in place. The primary purpose is to ensure consumer protection and, of course, animal welfare. What about the entities that are exempt from these regulations? In the last two years, over two dozen Florida-based rescues have been shut down or had their dogs confiscated due to neglect. One case in 2019, located in Highland County, just an hour distance from this location, rescuer facing 72 counts of animal cruelty. Over 70 animals were found, 23 of which were found dead. Animals were kept in stack, three high-wire cages neglected. These people are providing dogs to the public who have been exposed to a vast number of illnesses, and yet you are approving the adoption of these rescue dogs. Does this negate your animal welfare concerns? This ordinance does not address any entities operating under these terms. Why this ordinance, while well-intended, is unrealistic? How would banning the only regulated entity and requiring them to only get their animals from unregulated sources help consumers or the animals? You are not going to take away your community's desire for puppies or kittens, however you can protect your community from the unregulated entities that are providing them. By requiring all pet dealers to be regulated, you are offering your constituents highly regulated outlets where consumers can responsibly get their desired pets. This will bring you a step closer to accomplishing what this ordinance has set out to do. Adopting an ordinance like this when you're considering won't save or benefit a single consumer or animal. It does not address the right sources to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Judith Seltreitch, I don't think is here. Thank you, ma'am. Justin Johnson, Justin Johnson, I'm sorry. Followed by Gretchen DeSavio.
I just want to apologize. I was recently diagnosed with bronchitis a couple of days ago, so I apologize. I'm coughing a little bit. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Justin Johnson, and I've been helping families find pets for the better part of six years now, and I love what I do, and I understand that there's a desire on all of our parts here to make sure that both the people and the pets are well-informed and looked after throughout this whole process of choosing a family pet. And currently, state regulations protect both consumer pets and businesses alike. However, the banning of pet stores and sending your constituents to the internet would not help the community but hinder it. Agenda item B4 closes businesses, ruins careers, and shatters lives of the people that are sitting behind me currently. Alice Holt is gone. She is not coming back. We all saw to that. We all agree with it. She was denied a license to be grandfathered in when she applied, and the fact that we're painting everybody with the same brush that she got doesn't do any favors for any of us here. I see families coming in every day with different types of reasons for looking at puppies. Most of them come in because they either have allergies, they have a size limit in their apartment complex, or maybe they were a little kid and they always wanted some specific breed that they never had the opportunity to find in a shelter because they simply don't end up in shelters. Every single day, I get questions like this, and businesses like ours exist to satisfy a need to people all across the county who don't have the luxury of being able to adopt whatever's currently available in any shelter at the given moment. I've heard enough stories of people trying to find what they're looking for online or through shelters, and almost all of them come up either dead-ended, or they become scammed in some way from some unregulated source that is online, that establishment like this can't make amendments to correct. With the level of scrutiny and restrictions that we're currently under as a pet store, we're able to get some of the coolest breeds and by some of the best breeders in the nations, and we do this to provide people in the area with the lives that they want with the certain pets that they've wanted throughout their entire lives. It's people like that the current recommendations are being proposed, and some in this committee would be harming. So it's not necessarily the businesses that a lot of these people who have the best intentions in mind would be hurting, but necessarily, it's the people that the puppies would end up going to. I hope that what I'm saying here has landed on some receiving ears, as I'm sure that everybody in this room is a dog lover, if not everybody in this council having a dog at home, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Gretchen DeSavio. Megan Richards. Followed by William Rowland.
My name is Megan Richards. On November 9, I applied to adopt a puppy. I am a restaurant manager and a web designer. My long-term boyfriend runs his own business, and together, we own a house with a large fenced yard. I've had dogs my entire life. I am well-qualified to have a puppy. A few days after I applied, I received a call verifying my vet. I had fallen in love with photos online of this puppy, and I genuinely thought he'd be mine. The weeks that followed, I saw them post this puppy and his siblings at various events, including television. They held onto that puppy instead of adopting it out to a loving family. Instead, they show it off online and request donations to care for it. I never heard from that particular rescue again. I was heartbroken. I tried a second time to adopt a puppy after seeing a rescue post on Facebook. The post requested someone please come adopt a very cute puppy when the rescue opened at 11:00 a.m. I was there at 10:30 a.m. The puppy had been adopted prior to the post. Twice, I tried to adopt after two terrible experiences and there not being any pet stores in Sarasota, I went online. That's where I found a real puppy mill, a place without regulation, a place that wasn't clean or happy. When you close legitimate puppy stores, you'll hand over the entire market to the internet. Instead of crying tears of joy when I finally got my puppy, I cried tears of sadness because I couldn't afford to save his siblings, too. I've never cried leaving a legitimate puppy store, but it breaks my heart that that's where all these people are going to go from now on. You're just going to have to find them on puppy mill websites and stuff, and they weren't taking care of any of their dogs, and there was no one watching them or regulating them, and that's where it's going to go.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is William Rowland. On the screen, you'll see actual pictures of our breeders' kennels. We're going to filter through a couple of those. A reminder of how this all started about two years ago. A commissioner expressed to the board that local pet stores added volume to the PRC, the Pet Resource Center. That commissioner isn't here right now for some reason, and to that note, probably in hopes to show that the stores hurt the community. PRC director concluded unquestionably that this was not the case and that the pet stores did not add any significant numbers at all to the PRC. Regardless, we rolled on. After months of debate, the ban was finally brought to the table by that commissioner, and it was rejected as a sales ban. What arose from that was ultimately an ordinance which we all agreed headed towards a huge increase of the standard of the pet stores. The ordinance included things like permitting, inspection, sourcing transparency, breeder reports, microchipping, increased records-keeping, veterinarian inspection certificates, enormous penalties, which already included closing the stores for compliance issues, and recommendations for adoptions first prior to purchases. All three pet stores in the county have been compliant with this ordinance. We continue to work peacefully and professionally within Hillsborough County, the PRC, its director, and the field officers. In the past two years, there has been one breeder issue from one store. That's it. One breeder issue, okay? And that was immediately resolved. The same day we were notified of a request from the PRC, we took immediate action by discontinuing purchasing from that breeder. That's how that works. As of our most recent inspection report, which we'll put up through the PRC, this was dated December 2019, PRC confirms that we still continue to remain compliant with a 100% PRC-passed inspection report. It's highlighted right there for you. So why would you close compliant businesses? It makes no sense. I just gave you a real breeder example of how the current ordinance is working. There were, however, two issues brought up from the PRC in regards to the current ordinance. One of the issues was a timing record, a timing of records, and a second was about penalties. We feel we have a resolve for both those issues. We've expressed that, and we've given that to the PRC. It's a very clear and simple answer, and we would like you to consider at least trying that resolve prior to prohibition. That's it. Small businesses need your support. If you pass a ban, it will force us to sell online, but still in this county. So it just changes. It doesn't go away. The brick and mortar goes away, but the sales continue. Then you will have no opportunity at all to regulate online sales. So please, leave us there, regulate us responsibly and reasonably, and allow things to increase the standard of the overall industry. Thank you very much.
Regina Galloway, followed by Cheryl Henley.
Hi. My name is Regina Galloway. My husband and I own the three All About Puppies stores, two in Hillsborough County and one in Pinellas County. It has been our pleasure for 25 years to provide the healthiest, happiest, most socialized puppies from the most amazing breeders that we could possibly find to your constituents. Our longevity obviously speaks that your constituents want us here. They like our business, they don't have a problem with it, and they support us. With many of our employees here today, I would like to take this opportunity to publicly acknowledge how proud and thankful we are for their contributions to our business. They are hardworking, dedicated, caring individuals. Their love of animals is above reproach. We would have it no other way. Our hope today is to reassure you, this board once again, that our first priority will always be the welfare of the puppies entrusted to us. We also request that you do not entertain the proposal to regulate the already regulated and instead consider regulating the other animal sources that are in Hillsborough County that are not regulated. This would ensure that all animals in Hillsborough County would receive the same standard of care. In closing, I would like to denounce the overt interference of the Humane Society of the United States in our local politics. The gloves are off. We may sit, we may stay, but we will never roll over.
Our last speaker is Pedro Hernandez.
Hello, county commissioners. My name is Pedro Hernandez. I am here to discuss illegal pet importation. The importation of foreign animals is a major health and safety risk for people and the animals involved. Animals are brought in with falsified documents, some of which don't even have their eyes open, some arrive sick, others arrive dead. These animals also bring in foreign diseases like skin infections such as MRSA, as well as rabies, and a bunch of others. The alarming part is, according to the CDC, 1.06 million dogs are imported into the United States yearly, but these are the ones that just go through customs. Unfortunately, there are very many more ways that they can come in without being detected. Why is this needed? Why are the organizations importing animals? According to Illegal Pet Imports Undercovered by the CDC, the motives behind illegal puppy importation are not immediately obvious. However, a closer look reveals a big business driven by profit at the expense of the health and welfare of the underage puppies. We are placing ordinances like this in motion without realizing the long-term effects of these types of restrictions. We are banning the retail sale of dogs and cats to get rid of irresponsible breeding, but we in turn are supporting irresponsibly bred animals from other countries with no medical or behavioral background to be imported and sold in the United States. We are all here because we care for animals and we love them. No one runs a shelter, no one operates a pet store because they hate animals. It just doesn't work like that. We all want what's best for them. However, what may be good in theory may not be good in practice. Our breeders are not the people these ordinances were set out to get rid of. Unfortunately, misinformation led many communities to adopt bans rather than seeing the entire picture as to what could be causing harm to our animals. To quote "The dog shortage is real," here's an article by Today's Veterinary Business. Here are our choices. One, accept the health risk of illegal foreign imports. Two, implement a system to certify humane and U.S. commercial breeders and remove the stigma of puppy mills. And three, prepare for our puppies to become luxury goods as you will have to outbid them with your local neighbor. Thank you very much, guys.
That's our last speaker and public comment. I want to thank you for staying. I know it's been a long day for you, but we appreciate you staying so very much. Thank you for all that. Mr. Merrell, we have any future items? I have one. We have been discussing yesterday, I think in another workshop before that time, populations and where those populations of this county would be in the futures, and we saw an excellent presentation yesterday from Ms. Joannita from the Planning Commission. Some of the discussion we've had is talking about the population growth and where it should be possibly within our municipalities, specifically the city of Tampa. So my request to you and your staff, and you probably want to get the Planning Commission in, is to set up a meeting or workshop, whatever you want to call it, with Tampa City Council and Mayor Castor, and probably have that same presentation we had yesterday and anything else you feel necessary to talk about our population growth and where they're going. I think it's important that we do that. I had a conversation this morning with the chair of the Tampa City Council, and he's very concerned about what we had yesterday, and I think we need to do that. So that's my request, is to set up a time, get with our schedules, and we have that with the city of Tampa, City Council, and Mayor Castor, and we can work it all out. Mr. Merrell, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to ask the county attorney's office to review the lobbying ordinance. Evidently, from the article, they said that there were some loopholes, or they identified some. I'd just like to get more clarity regarding consultants who may be registered as lobbyists or who are engaging in lobbying. Thank you.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Yeah, I was actually thinking the same thing, so thank you. As I mentioned yesterday, I plan on bringing to the board a presentation, if I can get it, from the folks regarding the state of the regions on February 5, but I'll work on getting those details and make sure that you have them. Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Merrell? We adjourn.